Okay, President Marsette, we are live if you'd like to call the meeting to order.
Okay, at this time I'm calling our regular session board meeting to order. It is April 7th and Katie, if you would take roll call, I would appreciate that.
Certainly, President Marsette. President Marsette?
Here.
Member Bellamy?
Present.
Member Donley?
Here.
Member Hildy?
Here.
Member Holloman?
Present.
Member Mitchell?
Here.
And Member Vekalas?
Here.
All right, all board members are present and at this time I would ask Mr. Holloman to lead us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you, Mr. Holloman, appreciate that. Our student representative Sophia is not joining us, I'm sure she is busy with her schoolwork. But the board is honored to acknowledge that we gathered today on the traditional land of the Denina people, both past and present. It is with gratitude that we honor the land itself and the people who have cared for it throughout the generations. We want to welcome you to our meeting and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District in this board. The mission of the Anchorage School District is educating all students for success in life. The board thanks students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talent, your tax dollars. And if you're unable to be physically present, which everybody is unable to be physically present at this time, you can certainly, the way we're putting this out to the public right now is that you can actually tune into the Anchorage School District YouTube channel and watch the live stream. And of course, we will archive these meetings and you're welcome to go back and watch them if you can't watch them at this time. All right. With that, we are looking for approval of agenda, but at this time I would like to amend the agenda. And I would like to add something to action items and basically I'd like to amend it to add in the action items memo that would give us the opportunity to discuss postponing school board office elections at this time due to the emergency that the governor has issued and and to postpone that from the current date, which would be April 21st. I know we had this all written down, Katie, but so basically it's to suspend the election of board officers, which would have to be done seven days after the election is certified on the 14th, which would be the 21st of April. And due to the emergency orders of the governor, we would suspend that till May 21st or until the governor lifts the emergency orders. We'll have to discuss which one we'd like to do. And then I do believe that Katie, do we need to add to the non-agenda or can we do that later?
President Marsette, if we wanted to vote on this tonight, I would add this to action. Which just for discussion, I can add this to non-action.
No, it's going to be action, but I'm talking about the thing that Ms. Vekalas wanted to add to non-action.
I believe we should probably add one item at a time. And was there a second? I'm sorry to interrupt. Was there a second? Thank you.
Okay, so we have a second. So board members will vote on whether we'll, do we want to vote each one of them separately?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So let's, Katie, if you'll take a roll call, we'll vote on this one to add two action items.
Member Vekalas?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Hildy?
Yes.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
And Member Marsette?
Yeah. Okay, so that is unanimous, so that will be placed on action items to be voted on and discussed this evening. The other item, Ms. Vekalas, do you want to propose that amendment?
Yes, please. I move to add funding for health teachers to non-action items on tonight's agenda.
Okay, do we have a second?
It's seconded.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Donley. Miss, if we could take a roll call vote, please, Ms. Katie?
Yes, let me, I'm sorry, just trying to type.
Oh, no, that's fine.
I'm sorry, who was the second on that?
Donley.
Thank you. Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Marsette?
Yes.
Member Vekalas?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Hildy?
Yes.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
And Member Bellamy, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Yes.
Yeah, I would also have a motion. I would move to table memorandum 96 until the May 19th meeting, where it would appear as a non-action item and that would allow it to have a final vote on June the 2nd. That's the math curriculum.
Do I have?
Point of order?
Yes.
We're in the middle of a, of Member Vekalas's motion?
Yes.
Oh, I thought that already passed.
It did, but I need to state that, Dave.
Oh, okay.
Okay, sorry. So at this time, that motion did pass to add, to move to add funding for health teachers to non-action item for discussion. And so that will be added to our non-action agenda this evening. Now, Mr. Donley.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd move to reschedule the memo 96 until as a non-action item on May 19th, or May 19th meeting, and then that would allow it to have a final vote on June the 2nd.
Is there a second for that?
I'd be willing to second that, but I want to, I'm a little nervous on doing it now as opposed to at the action item, I'm just, so I want to make sure we have time to discuss it.
Right. So we could, Mr. Donley, at the, as an action item, we could do an amendment to move that at that time. Because we do want to have, unless you're going to pull it for discussion, but we'd like to have discussion on it.
Okay. I can, I can wait and move to table at that time, I guess.
Okay. And then that way we can have a discussion on it. Thank you, Mr. Donley, appreciate that. Okay, are there any other amendments to or changes to the agenda? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote for the amended agenda. Normally I'd ask if there's any dissension, but because we've amended it, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. So Katie, we're going, okay.
And I'm sorry, I was just looking to reshare that screen. I took it down a little bit early, but we'll go ahead and vote on that then. Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Oops, I'm sorry, one more thing. Apologize.
No, you're fine, Katie.
Okay. Oops. Was there a second to this motion to approve the amended agenda? I'm sorry.
No, I didn't hear one.
A second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Member Bellamy, you were affirmative, a yay?
Yeah.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
Member Hildy?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Vekalas?
Yes.
President Marsette?
Yes.
And Member Holloman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that, we do not have a military report tonight, nor do we have a student advisory board representative vote. As far as committee meetings, we have postponed committee meetings until May. We do have a budget committee meeting coming up though, Ms. Vekalas, when is that?
Yes, that's going to be in two weeks on, I believe it's April 21st, and it will be a Zoom meeting and so it'll be posted in accordance with all of our new rules and laws and stuff like that. And we'll get an agenda posted in a timely manner as well. And so far, it's going to be update on, you know, budget and finances and where we are.
Okay, great, thank you. All right. And with that, we're going to move on to our goal monitoring. Dr. Bishop, I believe you have something for us in reading for the gap analysis?
Yes, thank you. As we're getting this set up here, one Okay, thank you. You should see that in front of you and we are going to take a look at the reading. Madam President, the last board meeting that we had monitoring, which was when we actually were in session live, we, we had taken a look at the performance and in reading. And the request was made to really, through the questioning, was to take a look at where are we with our different student groups and the achievement gap in the Anchorage School District. With that, we've taken our math information to demonstrate, in addition to the peaks that we had already looked at, we went ahead and drilled a little deeper into the measures of academic progress. And in front of you is the performance goal. Of course, it's to increase the reading proficiency of K8 students, the math proficiency, as well as the percentage of students that are college and career ready. This presentation is in regard to our reading. I want to just clarify, over the last, I think maybe within the last 18 months, the measures of academic progress, which is put out by the Northwest Education Agency, NWEA, you may have heard, puts out the, they had changed the name from MAP to MAP Growth. And in understanding this, I want to let folks know that this is just the new name of MAP, but MAP can look at achievement data as well as growth data. I believe they changed the title of the assessment to ensure that in advertising and marketing that folks know that it can also measure the growth. So MAP Growth measures what students know and informs what they're ready to learn next. By dynamically adjusting to each student's responses, MAP Growth creates a personalized assessment experience that accurately measures performance. It shows how well a student has learned skills in a subject compared to similar students nationwide. And we'll move to the next. All right. The data in front of you is the achievement percentile for this fall, which was 1920. So these are our most recent data. If you take a look at all the different demographics, and we really pulled these out, not only the student groups representative of ethnicity and race, but in addition, we've taken a look at and really pulled out the different programs for which our kids are represented. The first number signifies of all ASD, and then we even go into the last number in purple there, which is absenteeism. Brown lines are those student groups in regard to race and ethnicity, as well as male and female. And to share a little bit about this, in the fall, this fall, it is the most recent testing window with full participation for all schools. In the middle of the year or the winter assessment, some schools, they may choose to assess their students or not. We leave that up to each school. And of course, this spring, I highly doubt that we'll have data for, for the assessment. But the overall ASD average for MAP reading was 52.24. This is about two percentile points higher than the national average. So in the entire nation or the normative group that they're sharing, our students fall a little bit above the exact middle of that group. We are, perform better than 52% of the other student groups and districts in the nation. The largest achievement gaps were between students with disabilities and students without disabilities. And that's signified by a capital S, small w, capital D, it's in the red there. The delta there was 31, almost 31 and a half points. The next largest achievement gap was our Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander students at 32nd percentile and white students at the 63rd percentile, which was a difference of over 30 points, percentile points as well. The third largest achievement gap was between Alaska Native American Indian at the 36th percentile, while white students were at the 63rd, which is about 27 percentile points. If you take a look, the last gap was really between Title I and non-Title I. And those are signified really about in the middle of the graph in blue. Again, I want you to kind of really focus on this and notice the ups and downs and the ebbs and flows of all these data. And this is what you'll see in the actual performance, what a student can actually do at that time and know at that time. We are going to look at the growth data after we take a look at the achievement data. I'm taking a look at this next chart. It really gives over time what has happened. And the line chart shows how the MAP reading achievement percentile changes between the testing windows for each ethnicity group. Although each ethnicity group shows a slight change between the fall and winter and spring testing, their relation point in accordance to the whole actually remains the same. White students had the highest average achievement percentile every testing window with an overall at the 61st percentile. So if you look at Anchorage across the nation, our students, our white students are performing at the 61st percentile, according to others in the nation. Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander again had the lowest achievement percentile with an overall average of the 30th percentile. And Alaska Native American Indian students have the second lowest average achievement percentile. So again, if you notice, the winter scores dip down a little bit. Again, not all students in each category, generally students who are behind are the ones that we want to continue assessing because we take a look at what we're missing and we set goals for them to reach the next time. This line shows how the MAP reading achievement percentiles change between the three fall windows for each ethnicity group. So we looked back three years ago at the beginning of 1718 school year, then we looked at 1819 and then this fall. Again, we did not show the fall of 1617 because we didn't have a large enough end. Not everyone participated. These were three testing windows where we had all schools participating in grades third through eighth. All ethnicity groups did increase overall in that last graph, except Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander. If you take a look at the last two and our Alaska Native and then Pacific Islander, the Alaska Native American Indian decreased a little over two percentage points. And that was really twice of any other group. And the red, although it looks pretty static, did go down by one percentile point. This was a question in regard to, by our community members to the board. I believe that NAACP requested some information on this. And this line shows how the MAP reading achievement percentiles change between the testing windows for Title I and non-Title I schools. Although each group shows slight changes before and winter, they are pretty consistent, as the other data has demonstrated. This line chart shows how the MAP reading achievement percentiles change between the three fall testing windows for Title I and non-Title I schools. Again, back to just the fall to fall to fall, rather than all the testing windows. Again, these are three data points that we actually have three solid data points. Only the fall testing do we have those three solid points to take a look at a trend. Title I schools increased achievement very slightly by almost a point. And non-Title I schools increased by a little over a point. Now, we're going to move into growth, and this is really the beauty of the math growth assessments that actually, on the math growth tests. So the MAP Growth, again, is the name of the test, but we just looked at achievement on the math growth test, which is the name. And now we're going to look at the growth on that same assessment. Again, the difference in this is the very last one. So the growth comparisons are between similar students nationwide and are matched by the same starting RIT score. So they're going to take, it's over 10 million students are normed with these NWA. And they're unidentifiable just by demographics and sex, as well as student groups, but not by a child's name or their location in the nation. All we know is that, say, a student that is Pacific Islander, we would find a similar student that was Pacific Islander in grade three with the same RIT score across the nation in the 10 million student pool, and then be able to track what their growth was according to of ASD students. So the power of this is to really demonstrate the change in the learning behavior. Did something change? And these, you'll see the data points look a little bit different than they did for the achievement, specifically in this next chart. This chart shows the average growth percentile for each student group from fall of 18 to fall of 19, and then fall of 2019 is the most recent testing window with full participation again at all schools. To be included in this growth chart, students had to have completed the math growth reading assessment in fall of 2018 and then again in 2019. So students in ASD that did not have those two points in time were excluded from this graph. The overall ASD average for MAP reading growth is 53, almost 53 and a half points. It's about three and a half percentile points greater than the growth that's demonstrated in the larger pool. So the mean growth that's demonstrated by the national norm, we're slightly ahead of that by three and a half percentage points. The lowest average growth percentile was for Alaska Native American Indian with 49.6. However, if you take a look across this entire grouping, similar to the student demographics, as well as the student, other student groups for which we take a look at that gap, these lines are a little bit more even than the achievement lines. What we're seeing is really that when kids come to us and learn, we are moving them in the trajectory where we want them to be. Granted, in order to change and narrow the gap, if kids start further behind, we have to find a way to narrow that gap. And we're finding that we're not narrowing the gap, but we are increasing the learning for each of these groups when kids come to our classroom. I do have some ideas about ways that we can really of this gap, and it really, really focuses on early intervention. But one of the great things, and this is again a request from a community member, is looking at Title I and non-Title I schools. They are within a percentage points, less than a percentage point difference, which demonstrates that the growth of those two are really moving the same with the resources. But unless we have some additional inputs or changes in instruction, again, we may see that growth will still stay the same. The only way I, that, well, I guess you could narrow the gap if you go, your mean goes down. We don't want that to happen. We want to keep everyone learning. But then some people having catch-up growth, allowing them to accelerate the growth to catch up to the mean. Lowering the mean for all is not something that we want to do and are interested in. So if you take a look, ah, I just licked my finger, don't do that. The average MAP reading growth percentile by ethnicity, if you take a look at these lines, you'll see the groups in those colors, but the trends for least and growth for our Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander, as well as Black, as well as Asian, steeper curve. And in fact, our Asian students beat the national mean by over five percentile points. So they, they actually made up more than the general students in the nation in growth. So we're pretty happy about that. And so the sharper the slope, the greater the slope, that indicates the closing of the gap. Certainly, it's not near where we need it to be at one and a half times to catch up a student, but certainly it is in moving in the right direction. Even our Alaska Native students are increasing slightly on this graph, which we don't see that trend all the time. We did have Alaska Native American Indians move from 47 and three quarters percentile to almost 50th percentile. So they did make an increase of almost two percentile points. Certainly, Asian students tripled that, but it is where we saw in the achievement, it looked like we were really receding. On the growth, we're making some gains there. In those groups, just to recap, the largest increase moving from 45.77 to 50 was the Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander moved 5.2. Black students moved over five percentage points, as well as Asian students made a huge gain as well. And again, they are well above the mean in their group. So these are moving, we're moving in the right direction, making efforts to close the gap. It's just that we have quite a bit to go. This next sign really simplifies again Title and non-Title I schools. And it's, the blue, of course, is Title I and non-Title is the green. Again, our Title I schools are actually creating more learning growth from where a student starts to where they end than our non-Title I schools. So the non-Title I schools are doing them quite well, or rather, Title I schools, they're both doing, making a difference. But Title I schools actually increased more than non-Title I schools. They changed the learning behavior at a greater pace than our non-Title I schools. And Madam President, the board, these are the data from our look into the achievement gap or the differences and really drilling down. And of notice is that kids are coming to us differently. We understand that. And understanding how can we narrow this gap, I surmise that this early intervention, again, because the earliest that we can impact a child's learning and getting them in, because we did see that we are moving our kids in the right direction. However, the longer that they are with us, the more difficult it is because we become so con in schools. And so really attacking those basics girls' skills early on. This was one of the reasons I was, I was so dismayed in regard to Senate Bill 6, because that had the majority of the funds that would really be able to push towards preschools to impact some of these changes. We do have examples I shared with the board of schools that are tripling the growth of other schools. We know what's happening in those schools. It's very deliberate actions in their classrooms to focus on student learning, focus on those needs, using data to demonstrate that. But overall, I believe the impact of early learning is certainly preschool, K1, 2 are those areas that we can make a greater impact so that when kids hit that third grade and they're reading to learn, that we can continue the work that's done in three through eighth. If we can get them closer to being at a spot that they're on grade level. We do know that around the 60th percentile, I believe Mark, Dr. Stock shared that previously, we can use MAP to predict our PEAKS test, and then we can use PEAKS test to predict what we're going to do on the national assessments such as NAEP. These tests do interpolate. We understand their connections and their relationships. And for us, understanding when a student hits about the 58th to 60th percentile on MAP, we can be rest assured that they're, they're going to do well on the PEAKS. MAP, we can be rest assured that they're, they're going to do well on the PEAKS test, that they will come in at achieving the standards or higher average or average or above average. However, those that are not, we, we understand already from the moment they come in and fall, if they would pass those by April. It's, it's a pretty strong correlation. So that relationship there. We use data again, go back to our, our groups and our grade level teams, our school level teams to really drill down into their students and understanding the needs and really wrapping the supports around the district in that area to support that action. Thank you. That completes my report.
Hey, at this time I have Ms. McHale's, you have a question or comment?
A comment and a question just real quickly. At the last fall meeting of the Council of Great City Schools, Member Holloman also attended as well, there was a lot of talk about using, you know, some of your testing in a predictive way. So I'm very appreciative to hear that you guys are putting all those together in that way. And thank you for that information, and I look forward to studying it and just a little bit more detail a little bit later. One of my questions that you kind of, you made the comment twice, and so I guess that's why I want to ask a question is you say that the winter testing is optional based on the schools. And for all of the data that we can get out of it, why is that particular one optional?
Dr. Bishop?
Sorry. Great question. So I actually am in support of not assessing in winter for students that are on track. If we take a look at kids who are on track in the fall and we know that they've hit their, their 60th or 58, 60th percentile, and we know that, hey, just continue in the classroom, teaching, 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 because that's what testing is about. It's not about a test for a test sake. It's a test to use to improve our instruction. So if we knew, if we know that kids are on track, then taking that time away from that instruction, I'm actually not in favor of. A lot of schools and we allow our schools to choose. If you notice, it goes down because some schools only test the students who weren't on track so that those data can be used by their teachers. Some schools do everyone because parents, we actually have a lot of parents that when they don't assess and one school does and another of their students doesn't, they're asking, actually asking for those assessments. It's one of the few tests that I think both teachers and students and parents actually have faith in that actually gives them really good longitudinal data from the time now. Some of our kindergartners now are in third grade, second, you know, second, third grade, and they have a really great look at their learning over time in ASD. But again, it's really based on the use. I don't think we should use any assessment unless that has a purpose. And the best purposes are for that increasing and the learning that's happening in the classroom and instruction. So for the students that need it, a test.
Ms. Bellamy?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you Superintendent for, for really drilling down into the data. My question though, has to do a couple of questions. The one I get more often, I guess, has to do with class sizes. Yes, Title I schools versus non-title. The class sizes in, especially when it comes to reading and math, specifically now reading, that class somehow the non-title schools have a higher percent, they have a lower percentage of, of when it comes to class sizes. So maybe 20 to 20 to one as opposed to, you know, 28, 30 to one. I know this data does not look, probably doesn't look at that, but, and I know you've given us some class size information before, but I don't think we've done it relative to the reading. So were there any, can you talk about class size relative to reading in the data that you presented tonight? Was that part of?
I, I, that's a great question through the President to Member Bellamy. We have looked at that and there actually, there is a difference. It's not the delta that as great as the example that you gave of just, you know, pulling numbers. It's about three fourths to one teacher in some of our schools and title schools and non-title schools. And generally what has happened and what we found over time when a director, a senior director, Dan Barker studied that with Dr. Stock, they took a look at, it was one teacher less the other way. And the additional funds are really being put towards something that President Marsetas has talked about as well, really around behavioral supports. So the additional funds that are being, that traditionally had been used to lower class sizes for an additional teachers at title schools, especially for math and reading, because sometimes they didn't do it ubiquitously. They just put in extra supports during math and reading time for those core. And what we're finding is a change to using additional funds for behavioral supports rather than counseling, you know, a behavioral coach and different things like that. And, and that's really wrapped around the title schools plan. What I can do is take the achievement of reading and then taking a look at their class sizes. I mean, this would be kind of a fun little experiment that we'll do and really look at, is the class size the indicator or the instruction, does that have anything to do with it? My, my first guess, because the biggest impact is in title schools, is that it probably wouldn't because our title schools demonstrated the, as a group, demonstrated the biggest growth because they, they have some practices that are pretty sound. But we'll do that because we might be surprised at some of those things that we learned. So that's a great.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have any other comments or questions? Okay, if not, I have a couple. I guess when I see growth, if there's an increase in growth, shouldn't there be an increase in achievement or does that not necessarily go hand in hand?
Um, that's a great question. You, we are seeing an increase in growth and at different paces. The achievement, but it's so small. It's, it's, remember on PEAKS, it was about one to two percentage points, three percentile points rather than percentage. So we do have an uptick over the three years as we demonstrated with the aggregate at the last meeting when we did this. It's just not where we need it to be. At this rate, it's going to take us 20 years to get there. So we have seen an uptick in reading achievement. It's just not at the pace that we'd like to see it.
And then you made the comment that, and Ms. Hilde, you'll be next. You made the comment that you look at when you, when you see success or whatever, or no success, you look at what direction you need to take. And I guess I'm wondering, when you look at that data, how do you decide what direction you take and what does that look like? I mean, what are the factors that you look at and how are some of the ways that, let's say a school or a student is not progressing? What would be some of the action items that we would take to increase that or to do a better job or whatever? I'm not even quite sure what to say.
Sure. So, Madam President, when schools receive their data back, there are scheduled data dialogue days that they're able to discuss the actions that they want to take in their schools, so the principal and the coach, and it might be at a grade level. It might just be third grade teachers taking a look at it or kindergarten with their principal and other supports, special education or ELL. They really take a look at the needs of their kids and then plan around that. So then it's, it's independent at the school level, but also funnels all the way up and the supports are given by the district in the secondary and elementary ed as well as teaching and learning. And it's really our MTSS model, the multi-tiered system of support. So when, when a school has, if we want 80 to 85% of our kids in the core instruction to be successful, when we're finding that only 30% of a group of kids are successful with the core instruction, that's when we do the core and more, we call it. So that the interventions, where you don't want to really take kids out of the learning with their peers, put them somewhere else and then expect that they come back in and they're all of a sudden caught up. We want to keep them learning with their peers in that group and then give that more. Part of the MTSS structure in elementary school is the WIN time. For those students that already are ahead, we look at expanding their learning and accelerating their learning. Sometimes during the reading time for WIN, kids who are meeting their reading achievement are actually in an advanced math class. So that it's really, it truly is about what I need, not just, okay, this is reading time, we're only going to do this. It really depends on the school, their different resources and where their kids are at that time. If I have, you know, a classroom where the majority of the kids, say the 80% did get a skill that they needed to learn, but a few didn't, sometimes they might organize differently. Maybe one teacher who was successful will share with other teachers. So it is quite organic with the supports about understanding and research about what actions actually work in teaching something new. We've had training, just different PD is wrapped around that. So there's a plethora of different things to do, but it starts with the learning of the children. Is there a trend? Did we miss something? I actually, I think I shared with the board once, I watched one of these meetings and it was in regard to math scores in the math assessment. And they, they took a look and a bunch of students, they found out kept missing number 17, number 17, why are these kids missing number 17? And then they opened up this test booklet, looked at number 17 and said, oh, that's a word problem. Then they looked at the words and said, well, I wonder, do they know what these words mean? Because this particular one was a percentage, figuring out the percent off of something that was on layaway. And they wondered, do they not get percent or do they not know what the word layaway means? And so they really broke it down individually just by using their own data. And so things happen that way, but also as a district, we do that at our level as well. And then we understand the trends. Boy, our kids really aren't getting this. How can we provide professional development to teachers so that we know the best practices way to learn that skill?
Did we lose Dr. Bishop?
I just turned it off. Anything else?
Okay, we, can you guys hear me? My internet connection was interrupted. Okay. So at this time, I think Alicia Hilde is next and then Ms. Bellamy.
Thank you, President Marset. And thank you, Dr. Bishop. You know, I can't help but see that Pacific Islander students stick out and it just seems like we don't talk about that. You know, maybe if you asked an average community member, who's struggling in our district, I just don't think we get enough attention to that and, and, and why, you know, and I know that's not really maybe a numbers answer, but you know, we talk about kids coming in, we see the growth happening over the year. So when kids are in our classrooms, teachers are working, helping them a year growth and sometimes more we saw in the Title I. And you've talked about the pre-K, but what is it in the K first that we get that, you know, we saw 35, whatever the Title I span was, non-title? I mean, that just holds steady. You know, there used to be like extra kindergarten year. I, I don't, I don't know those kinds of things, but why, why is it that group do we know have struggling populate, you know, why, why, why are, why are the people who are at the bottom at the bottom struggling? And, and what, what are some of the options maybe?
Sure. That's a great question through the President. We have at individual school levels as well as district level, taking a look at this. It isn't a surprise that that group also has nearly 40% of the students in this group that represent that ethnicity are, have chronic absenteeism, which means chronic means they miss more than 17 days of school. So if you think about even 10 days of school, that's a lot, but seven, more than 17, this group represents, they also are the group with the most. So there is a relationship there. When we have some schools, I would say Bartlett has been a school that has made great impact in this student group. And they've created a sense of belonging. And for instance, they don't have, and this is just an example, not at the lower level, but at this high school level, they don't have a cut policy for their football team. So they, they have the largest amount of Pacific Islanders at their school. They keep them in, basically create a family for the kids. And there is a mandatory study hall that Sean Prince does with all of the football. They have over 200 kids in their football program and it's usually around 100 and 125, but they have a no cut policy and they want to keep these kids together and keep them in that family. Consequently, that is what they learned, that is a very cultural aspect to that, that when there is a death in the family, it is a long mourning period and a long grieving period, as well as if there's any celebration, a wedding. Those celebrations are quite long. We found out is a lot of the schools miss, even for the little guys, sometimes when kids get older, they, they choose that themselves. But for the little guys, it really is about some family. And then our outreach is to think about how can we help support families and understand that being there every day really does affect the learning that happens. And maybe it is extending the school year and having natural breaks that are longer. I don't really have the answer, but I know that these are some of the discussions that have come from schools themselves when they really dig into it, because they're finding it over and over again, as you shared. It's at the lowest achievement, the lowest growth, but also if you take a look at attendance, it also shows there. But some of the, the report back that I've been in just meetings consequently, just through my work at the secondary level, I've just heard of some of the, the creation of belonging is, is a key at the high school level.
Okay, Ms. Bellamy?
Sorry. Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. So my, my, you answered part of my question, Dr. Bishop, with the, with the Ms. Hilde's question, you know, what are those root causes? And are, are schools expected to dig into the root causes? What that data, the data that you shared with us tonight, do schools at their individual sites, do they dig into the data and they come up with identifying that their own particular headwinds, crosswinds and tailwinds? I mean, there has to be a way for us to help people understand what the challenges are. And, and I think that, I think the root causes would be one thing. And then my other question, not really related, but kind of, how are we doing with, right now in our tele, our online work, are those kids showing up? I mean, are they in the, are they, how are we reaching them or do we need to do something different? And we may not know that right this minute.
Thank you. Great questions, Member Bellamy, through the President to the board. So the first thing, yes, they actually, I don't know if the expectation's there. I, I mean, certainly it's an expectation for us to grow and to learn, but I want to let you know that in some of the meetings that I've seen in schools, the, the teachers' hearts, it's just heartbreaking, you know? I mean, they are just trying to do so much to figure out, how can I reach these kids and how can I help these families? So I would definitely say yes. The expectation is there for us to really look at the data and then change the learning behavior to improve it, to, to learn. And that our schools do absolutely really take this seriously, so much so to where they're doing home visits. The partnership with United Way on the Plus Schools really discovered part of this that really asking for the homework and the additional tutoring to be done while the child is at those after school activities, because once they get home, it's just a different focus in the home. It's about, you know, having food together and then, you know, being a family and having a large number of siblings, so not really having a place to study. So some of the schools reported out that that's really what they would like to get, you know, right after school in the Plus Schools, they're, they're getting a snack, they're getting 30 minutes of homework done right with a tutor or someone from the Plus Schools, and then they get to play a game. So they're really creating these habits and it's really just connecting to see what's going to work and making those connections with home. But I would say really at that classroom, grade level data, you know, breaking it up and studying it, that, that the right work is happening. It's just, you know, at this time, it's so big. It's, it's trying, what, what can we do that's going to, you know, tick away at this and really create some really good structure for kids. The second question is great, and I'm going to allow during the superintendent update, we have an update and those folks that are on the instruction side will update about the connections made and if there is anything about this particular student group that's struggling more.
Okay. Thank you. Dina Mitchell?
Thank you so much for that presentation. I'm just curious, and I may have missed it, over time, do we see some of these gaps widening or tightening? Because when you talk about the Pacific Islanders, Because when you talk about the Pacific Islanders at Bartlett and that sense of belonging in the high school, I'm just curious, is there, you know, when we look at year by year, how, how is the trend?
Certainly. Thank you for that question, Member Mitchell, through the president. Actually, what we did see is that even for Alaska Native Pacific Islander for grades three through eight, it's closing the gap. It's just not going to be, if you looked at the, the lines where it was just a fall to a fall, you saw that Alaska Native Pacific Islander and Asian actually had the steepest slope. So they actually made more of a connection. At the secondary level, where we'd have to really dig into DNF data, that's, and the graduation data, those are the data points at, at that for the performance goal. So we'd have to look at that. But I would share that over the last four years, we have doubled or even tripled the gains that we had overall for the overall goal. So we were at 84%, which was an increase of about 3, 3.5% overall of all graduates for the graduation rate. And in our student groups, a lot during that same time, it was greater than that, than that percentage. So we're, we are looking at narrowing it again, the pace of that. If we only go 2% or 6%, again, it would take quite some time for everyone to get there. Because at the same time, your students overall are also growing. Because remember, we don't want one population to go down while others go up and create no gap just because we, we have, you know, everybody went down. We don't want to regress to the mean, that's called. We still want to continue. But past eighth grade, I don't have that on map, but we could look at other data points and report those back. Great question.
Okay. Are there any other board comments or questions before we move on? Ms. Bellamy?
Yes, just, I just, I'm wondering if a lot of what's probably going on or could be going on here has, it's probably cultural. Do we, I know we used to have cultural liaisons in schools to help people, help staff navigate some of the nuances that, that, you know, that just did not fit within our own system? And then to come up with some kind of, I don't know, accommodation or something so that you didn't have the, the clash with the, you know, that comes with culture differences? We don't, I know we no longer have liaisons, but is that something that you think might help schools? Not just look at the achievement and the growth, but use, use a lens that's specific to each, to the, to this group especially? I know we do with Alaska Native American Indian students, but I don't know that we do that with others.
Through the president to Member Bellamy, you're correct. So through our Indian education, we do, Doreen does a great job. Doreen is now leading the migrant ed. And Doreen, as a senior director, also working with TIDAL, which is Glenn Nielsen is the title now. Jenny Knudsen is working with ELL, which is Christine Garby. And we've placed all of those different really funded, federally funded programs under one to actually kind of impact greater. And so we'll have to see how, how that works. But I do know that that is one of the goals, to really share those resources and get them in the right place. But you're absolutely right. What, what typically we did find is with that was the cultural piece of the understanding of the success in school and how missing for those long periods of time with either wedding celebrations or birthdays event, as well as funerals, really does impact a child's learning. Because it's, it's a lot of absences, but they're not absent just for absence sake. They're, they many times are with family, you know, obligations. So we'll, I can pose that back to the team and, and, you know, get what they think. And they do have some of that work. Family engagement is a huge piece of our TIDAL program, as well as what we're trying to build through our equity work through our new equity position is, is building that family engagement and tie between federal programs as well as the equity piece.
Okay. And I, I guess I, I just want to make sure that we all have different cultural traditions and celebrations. And I think, but I also think that it's even deeper than that when it comes to fitting into systems and then not changing the system that we're asking kids to fit into. So it's that, it's that, it's trying to, trying to have information on both of those pieces. I, I think when we're looking at any situation, especially when it comes to achievement and closing that gap and even building that family engagement piece, I don't have the answer, but I just know that we, I, I just think we're missing, it would give us an opportunity to, to maybe change some of the way we do things when it comes to our families.
Thank you, Ms. Bellamy. I, I guess I'd like to add too, and we talk about engaging communities from different cultures, ethnicities. I, I could see where MECAT could be a great, you know, I know we've lost a lot of our members, but maybe we could, I don't know. I mean, I don't want to make a suggestion, but it's, it's definitely something. I think if we could get the right people back involved, that could help us also with, with some of these things that are happening in our school and getting the community groups back involved. But I, I know that Sonya Hunt is looking at that. And after all of this is over, maybe we'll, we'll see something, but thank you, appreciate everything. All right. We're going to move on to public testimony. I'm going to read a statement here that the board welcomes public comment on non-agenda, non-action items. We value public comment as an ensures that we remain aware of public thoughts, ideas, and concerns and inform our decision-making process. There is a one-hour time slot at the beginning of the meeting. Testimony in excess of one hour will be heard at the end of the meeting or maybe submitted in writing. We don't have a table in front of you right now, but Katie will let you know when your three minutes is up. And we probably need to change some of this for our future board meetings because I don't think we'll hear anybody clapping. But, and it has changed a little bit, so we, we probably will update this the next couple of meetings, just to make sure that. But it's my understanding, if someone does want to testify at this time, that they have to submit something to the school board that they'd like to testify, and there's a time limit on that that's when it has to begin, because we need to get a telephone number so that we can call you when your time to testify is. And Katie, I think we have two individuals?
Yes, thank you, President Marsete. We do have two individuals. It'll take me just a moment. I have to call each one individually, and I will get that language updated for you. And I'm going to go ahead and give our first testifier a call. Take just a moment. And my IT support people, if you're on the line and can hear me, I lost my box for the testimony. Can you see if this person is on?
Uh, I'm on.
Oh, thank you. Is this Gabriella?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, you are on for the school board meeting. And I am going to go ahead and start a timer that I can see, you have three minutes to testify. And when it comes to 30 seconds, I'll just give you a little bit of a reminder to, that your time is running out and you can finish up your sentence. So you can begin whenever you're ready.
Okay. Well, I'm here today to talk to you about graduation. I'm a senior at Eagle River High School, and graduation is something that's extremely important to all seniors, but I think also community members, family members, teachers. Graduation isn't a right, it's something we've earned. And that everyone else since the history of school has gotten, give or take. And that probably most of you, if not all of you, had graduation. So I'm proposing that you guys host graduation in June or July or early August before senior degree for college. Instead of doing a virtual graduation, because a virtual graduation is not an end way similar to what a graduation would really be. We've already bought our gowns, and we have, most of us have announcements already and had families coming. So an in-person graduation is what we've been waiting for for 13 years, if you count kindergarten. And even more depending on the student, like I switched states, I moved state, so I went to kindergarten twice. So I've been waiting 14 years. And hosting graduation in the summer wouldn't be very different than if you did it normally, because you guys already have all the plans for graduation made, you've just been moving them to a different date. Also, teachers I know and your staff aren't in session then, but I think we'd all, and I know I have some support from some teachers, at least, would be willing to give up a week of their summer to give seniors what we've been waiting so long for, and many of them want to see us graduate. Also, I, I have some friends that were concerned, they were really disappointed they couldn't graduate at the Sullivan Arena in the summer. If we keep up the way we are right now, the Sullivan Arena may be open by then. So you wouldn't even have to change and make new plans around a new location. So I think it's something that could very easily be done. I highly recommend you consider it, because graduation is something that is really dearly important to us seniors. And it, I, when it hit me that I wasn't going to get to graduate like everyone else was, I, I started bawling, and I know that other seniors had the same reaction. It felt like a big loss. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie, do we have someone else?
Thank you, President Marsete. Oh, yes. Thank you, Gabriella.
Thank you, Gabriella.
And I have a call in to Ella Brenner. Ella, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. You are on for public testimony at the school board meeting. You have three minutes to testify, and you can begin whenever you're ready. When the time runs out, if you have not had a chance to finish up, I will just let you know.
Okay.
Whenever you're ready.
Hello, school board, okay, sorry. Hello, school board members, my name is Ella Brenner. I'm a senior at Eagle River High School. Today I will be testifying about graduation for the class of 2020. A group of my friends and I have recently reached out to you about graduation plans. I have to say that I was pleased and comforted by the positive responses that we received back from school board members. I am here with you all today to say my message once more. The class of 2020 deserves a physical graduation when safe to do so. I understand that the district has begun to make a sort of virtual graduation, but I will say openly and honestly that this is not with the class of 2021. It would feel very impersonal and not like a graduation at all if all we got was our name read over a Zoom call. I talked to over 50 seniors from my graduating class of 151 students, and almost all students wanted to have a ceremony. It is really important to all of us. The majority of adults I have talked to do not see how important this is to the seniors. They say that we should just accept it and move on, because high school graduation isn't going to be the biggest moment of our lives. While this is probably true for most seniors, including myself, this will have been the biggest achievement of our lives thus far. To me, a graduation ceremony is something that symbolizes the end of our road of hard work. I have been in the district for all 13 years of my education. A graduation to me would mean the end of this chapter in primary education. It would symbolize everything I've worked for. It is the chance to say goodbye to the teachers I love and the incredible education I have received during ASC. This pandemic has made me feel like I am not allowed to finish reading this chapter of my life. If I had a graduation, I think the feeling would be very different, and I could find peace that I was ending on a high note. I have heard that the superintendent would like students to start brainstorming the future of graduation, and my friends and I have begun to do just that. I know we do not know what the future holds, and that this is a logistical nightmare for the school board to figure out. But I believe that every school should have the autonomy to make graduation plans and recognize their students if possible. The students at Eagle River High School are extremely bright and have great ideas. We would appreciate it if you let us have a say in this all and share our ideas with you. It would leave the world to us, and to me, it would leave a lasting impression on my heart that the district listened to us and valued our say during crazy times. We will continue to reach out and share our ideas with you and keep in contact with you to show how serious we are about having an in-person ceremony when this pandemic subsides. To conclude, I would like to say that a graduation is extremely important to all of us. We understand that we will not know how long this pandemic will last or when it will be safe to have a graduation. But this moment is a necessary end to our education in ASC, whenever it is possible and safe to do so. Please listen to our concern and ideas. We respect the hungered-on ban in government regulations, but we are the future and we deserve more than a virtual ceremony. The class of 2020 is important and deserving us so much more. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, and with that, we are going to move on to superintendent update, Dr. Bishop. Ms. Hildy?
Yeah, we had mentioned when people submit written testimony, do we have a plan for logging written test? You know, when they email it, but for testimony?
Yes. We'll be logging that on Board Docs. Not going to read it during the meeting, but we will put that into our Board Docs and if anyone can view it.
Okay. Just wanted to check. Thank you.
Madam President, would you, would you like us to create something similar to how we do as, for the minutes for the board to accept that on the record, or is the Board Docs enough, do you think?
Excuse me. You know, let's, we'll, I'll check the board and they're able to view those. And if not, I'll have Katie send that out to each board member.
That sounds great. We, we certainly have received it, and I know that you wanted folks to know, to keep it coming. It's good in this electronic world now that we live in.
All right. I'm thinking about that. Dr. Bishop, let me ask her, did we get any written, written testimony, Katie? I don't believe so.
Immigrant graduations?
I got anything.
Yes, President Marsete, I didn't get anything that was specifically earmarked for testimony. But we can look at the language that's posted on the website as well and, and.
We got one that was labeled testimony from the AEA president?
That is correct. We did get something from the AEA president.
Yeah, and that did go to everybody, and Katie and I did talk about it today, so we'll be posting that in Board Docs.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Dr. Bishop, please continue.
Nope, that, that's a great plan, that it's, it's public. All right, thank you. So during the superintendent report, again, I wanted to update the board on the actions of the school district. But before starting the presentation, I, I wanted to share, now that we're up and going in schools in regard to the first two weeks, sometimes the, the folks that work on things are, are, there's a book called The Invisibles, that work just gets done, but we don't really know who these folks are. And I want to give a shout out to the Department of Teaching and Learning. And they have been supporting elementary and secondary education in the following ways. And you're going to hear from the elementary and secondary senior directors, as well as Dr. Stock on the instructional side. But to share the continued work that's going on in the, so the directors, curriculum coordinators, and teacher experts have been doing the behind-the-scenes work from day one, as we shared at the last meeting, to develop online supplemental content and paper packets. They've also worked with the Alaska Public Media on programming and to deliver teacher support trainings and open labs for elementary to continue the learning. Curriculum coordinators and teacher teams have worked on iSchool and secondary education to create courses that we can roll out for credit. Federal programs and the directors, as well as staff, have been connecting with families. Translators and interpreters have been working with the curriculum departments and service desk to provide access to information in five different languages, the top five different languages in the district. So in addition to the actions that you'll see that are, are out there, there's also teams of staff continuing really to stand up this work behind the scenes that are also working from home, not to a classroom of students, but a lot of times to a classroom of teachers and organizing that. So I just wanted to publicly give a shout out to those teachers, experts, those coordinators, those directors. Uh, that are really giving, uh, the extra effort to make all this happen. Without further ado, I'm going to take a look at, uh, the programs and service, uh, services update. Uh, that we started our last two meetings and we will continue this as the district moves forward. So that the board and the community has a mind eye of the work of the Anchorage School District. Uh, at this time, I'll turn it over to, uh, the Chief of Operations, uh, Mr. Tom Roth.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Good evening, uh, everybody, uh, through the board president. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Jennifer Petronas, the district's Director of Healthcare Services, to provide the board with a medical update. Jennifer, to you.
Right, the ASC nurses have been really busy, um, throughout this panemdemic. We have a hundred and eight full-time nurses and right now we have thirty-eight of those nurses working at the Anchorage Health Department doing contact tracing. Which means that once somebody tests positive, they call that individual and they figure out all the places that person went within the last fourteen days, how long they were there. Who did they come in contact with? And then from there, they're, they call those individuals that they came in contact with. And then the process just starts over and then they monitor every single person that came in contact with that person who tested positive. So I have thirty-eight nurses doing that. I have two nurses working full-time at the Emergency Operations Center as case managers. So their jobs are to contact the positive individuals every day to see what resources they need within the community. From things like taking their dog for a walk, um, getting groceries, going to Walgreens and maybe getting Tylenol or Motrin. And sometimes those nurses actually go out and do those, um, errands for those individuals in other times. They find someone within the community that can do that for them. I have thirty nurses that are working the two-one-one call center, which is where community members can call in for generic questions. Um, and medical questions related to COVID-19. And it's also where community members can call to get resources about where to go and what they can do if they have specific questions. Additionally, we have four, um, ASD nurses that are doing home visits to some of our most medically fragile students within the district. They're doing medical procedures that these students would normally get during school hours. And they're also checking on these children if the parents request it, um, for things that are not COVID-related. Like maybe they have something wrong with their eye and they just want someone to look at it so they don't have to leave home and potentially expose. Their child to the community, the risk of the community. Um, as of today, uh, Alaska has two hundred and thirteen positive cases. Twenty-nine of those cases have since recovered. We have ninety-eight in Anchorage and today has been the most positive cases that we've had in one day for the state of Alaska. Um, so we suspect that'll keep going up, but with good social distancing, staying six feet away and wearing masks if you leave your house is the new recommendation. Um, cloth mask for anyone that's not medical and I think that's it for my update, unless you have questions.
So what I'd like to do now is to provide the board a, a brief, uh, update from the municipality, just, just for awareness. The, uh, the district's representative to the municipal EOC is, uh, Ms. Ashley Lally, our Director of Security and Emergency Preparation. So first, I just want to emphasize that, that right now, that the EOC is focused on worst-case scenario planning. Uh, in the event that, uh, cases of COVID-19 significantly increase and that, uh, we start to see, uh, some deceased from the disease. So just to summarize, three, three areas that the, the EOC, uh, is, is working on now. First, uh, feeding sites, the city is looking at, uh, three potential feeding sites, uh, in the municipality. They're currently in the planning stage for that. Uh, we have Mr. Andy Mergans as well as Ashley Ball, uh, in this planning process with the bank, Food Bank of Alaska and the Salvation Army. Uh, they are facilitating the planning efforts specifically in the areas of, of meal packaging and assembly, as well as, uh, meal distribution methods. The, the locations that they're looking at, uh, in the city now are the parking lots of Hanchu, Bagage, Romick and Clark Middle School. Uh, we don't have a timeline for implementation, but it could happen as early as next week. The city is also working on, uh, continuing to work on shelter locations for the city's homeless population right now. Sullivan and Ben Bokey Arenas are currently being used as shelter sites. The city also has Dempsey Anderson Ice Arena designated as a quarantine and isolation site for, uh, any, any homeless. Uh, population that may test positive for COVID-19. Last thing from the Muni on, on the update, uh, for your information tomorrow is the last day for scheduled people, people mover routes. The, the service will shift to what is called a very limited number of essential rights, uh, for community members and those will be available through anchor rides. Essential is defined as, as anything medical appointment-related pharmacy visits, uh, transportation to critical jobs and also for groceries. This is a first-come, first-served program and of note, it's, uh, one person can be on a bus at any given time. So, uh, again, very, very limited. So I'm going to transition to talk to a couple other topics that are, that are, uh, district-specific. First, uh, you may be aware, but we are, and, and as of today, uh, in the business of providing, uh, transportation, uh, support. To our student homes in cases where students or their families lack the means.
Mr. Roth? Mr. Roth?
You know what? We, uh, if we, we did have some, uh, difficulties with, uh, GCI and the connections in, um, Eagle River. That's where Mike was. Or no, or actually, no, he's in Anchorage. So, uh, I'll continue this and then as he gets back on. Oh, there you are.
I think, I think I'm back up.
Can I, can I interrupt for a minute? Um, I do have a board member with a question. Dina Mitchell?
Uh, I had a question that referred back to what Ms. Petronas was talking about. At this point, I can maybe wait till the end, so I'm not interrupting Mr. Roth slow.
Okay.
Um, if, Madam President, if we, uh, could do that, um, we can just flow right through that. And if the board wanted to take notes, uh, that way we'll just move it along, uh, for time's sake.
Sounds good. Thank you.
So I'm, I'm going to continue unless, unless you tell me otherwise. I was, uh, just starting to talk about Stuber, our transportation, uh, support to the district. To, uh, provide, uh, services and items to students at their homes, uh, when their families lack the means, uh, to travel. So this program is being managed by Cassie Jeremias from the District Administration and Heather Filp, who is our Senior Director of Student Transportation. Now, Ms. Jeremias serves as the bridge between the customers and the customers really at this point are IT and special education. And the Student Transportation Department. So to briefly describe the system. The customers complete a spreadsheet that explains what needs to be delivered, where it needs to go, when it needs to be there, and then any special instructions. Ms. Jeremias will review those, those entries with the customer and then forward those to student transportation and their businesses to turn. These requirements into the most efficient routes and then they do the deliveries. So today was our inaugural day of, uh, Stuber. We had three buses out today and, uh, in support of IT delivering thirty-three computers across the district as far as Girdwood. So we think this is going to be a great program moving forward. The second area is to talk about Campfire. Right now Campfire is operating two childcare centers. For the municipality's first responders at two of our ASD elementary schools, Alpenglow and Rogers Park. In, in discussions with the Campfire CEO last week, Campfire is providing this childcare at no cost, at least. While they have, uh, funding available to do so. Their capacity is eighteen kids at each site. In addition to the, the, the buildings that are being provided, um, without charge, the district's support includes a, a very comprehensive daily custodial support. Uh, we have provided them thermometers to each site. They're, they're testing kids as they come in. And then maintenance support is needed. We also have, uh, an agreement with Campfire to potentially expand from two to four schools if, uh, the community need, uh, dictates. Uh, that requirement and the campfire is, uh, able to support this increase. The next topic is very briefly to talk about playground closure. Uh, effective this weekend, it was a municipality decision to close municipal playgrounds and the district. Uh, also closed access to, uh, district playgrounds, uh, as a part of this program with the purpose to slow the spread of COVID-19. So yesterday morning, uh, I dispatched maintenance personnel to all the elementary schools and they've marked these playgrounds. With yellow barrier tape and signage indicating that the playgrounds are not to be used until further notice. So that's where we are with that. And then the last, uh, topic to very briefly touch on, uh, Jennifer did talk a little bit about the other face coverings. So the district is procuring some number of cloth face coverings for district employees who continue to have direct contact with the general public. And, and these are primarily our, our staff who are out at the twenty-six school sites on the buses, distributing food. Involves, uh, IT employees who are providing, uh, computers to staff and students. But based on the guidance in State Health Alert Number Ten, which came out a couple of days ago. Uh, the district plan is to issue at least two face, uh, coverings to employees that are working at these sites. It was also brief, very briefly discussed, we do have a, a number of the N-95 masks. But the district is providing those to our medical first responders and, and in lesser numbers to APD and AFD. So, uh, we are looking at the, the cloth face coverings for, uh, district staff. And that concludes my update for this evening and I'll be followed by Human Resources.
Good evening, uh, through the president to the board, uh, brief update, uh, related to the new requirements under the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, FFCRA. Uh, this was turned around in, in quite a hurry. We had the passage of the act in just last month in March and the requirements went into effect. Um, already April first. Uh, two main components. There was an expansion of the FMLA, the, uh, Family and Medical Leave Act. And then second, an emergency COVID-19 leave provision. I'll talk about each of those in a second. Next slide. Thanks. So with respect to the expanded FMLA, uh, it's a new provision, um, uh, added to the act. And it provides, uh, an employee who is not able to work, telework or remain in on-call status. Because of a need to care for a child because of a school or, uh, childcare facility closure, to take a maximum of twelve, twelve weeks off. Um, we've, uh, updated our leave entry system, uh, to account for this, uh, provision in the law and the one I'm about to talk about. Uh, but this is one of two components that's changed under the new act. And that second component, as I referenced, is the emergency COVID-19 leave provision. This, uh, again, uh, brand-new. Uh, law for us went into effect also April first. So we're about to leave in, uh, a week into this. Um, and this is a separate, uh, paid. Leave provision for those employees again who can't work, telework or be in on-call status. For a number of reasons that I won't, uh, go through right now in the interest of time, but essentially. Uh, either because they themselves are ill or experiencing, um, COVID-19 symptoms or, uh, responding to a quarantine. Uh, or also there is a childcare, uh, provision in this portion of the act as well. But once those eighty hours or ten, ten workdays have been exhausted, that, that leave bank, um, for this benefit is depleted. And so this, um, again, was, um, really a, a collaborative effort between. The district's IT staff and, um, the benefits office to, uh, turn around some requirements in this area and on very short notice. We had about two weeks, uh, lead time to get this in place and, uh, folks have been. Now receiving training from, uh, benefit staff from Senior Director Megan Schmidt, who's, uh, began training director supervisors, uh, with regard to the requirements. And we have a number of, um, collateral materials that, uh, we've also distributed, um, in various ways to both supervisors and employees. Uh, so that folks are aware of these new leave provisions. That is the extent of my HR update.
Good evening. This is Jim Anderson. I'm the Chief Finance Officer at state level. A pretty busy day. I think the board and the community is tracking that the legislature approved the operating budget. Uh, with a full state bond debt reimbursement, thirty million outside the formula and additional pre-K funding. This afternoon, uh, the governor signed a budget and vetoed one hundred percent of the state bond debt reimbursement. The thirty million dollars outside the formula funding plus the increased pre-K funding. He did describe, um, in, in some detail though, that he intends to supplant. The bond debt reimbursement, which is a little over forty-one million dollars. And the thirty million dollars, uh, with federal funding from the CARE Act. Uh, he did not, uh, have a plan to fund the additional pre-K funds. On the state capital budget update, Melissa Myers has been working with Representative Johnson's office for, uh, several months now. To develop a reappropriation of about a couple dozen old ASD legislative grants for projects that had been completed. Uh, but we didn't have the authority to use that, use those funds for something else. So she worked with, uh, Representative Johnson's office, developed, uh, a consolidated appropriation package. It was put into the capital budget and approved, allowing us to have one point one million dollars. And a legislative grant purely for ASD earthquake recovery. So big win on that. Um, Senator Von Emhoff naturally on the Senate side of the House was also in full support and helped push this to the finish. On the federal side, um, the projected K-12 revenue we expect to get from the CARE Act should be approximately ten million dollars. So it would almost offset or be pretty close to, uh, what we would have received from the state funding out of the thirty million. Would have been about eight million dollars, uh, plus a two-million-dollar local match. So if in fact the state can supplant education funding with the CARE Act, um, then. And I, I think we're still going to be in far better position than we were, uh, six weeks ago. Student nutrition in the CARE Act has several billion dollars. We're not sure yet how it'll be appropriated. We, we are in deficit mode with student nutrition, um, as we're paying the employees to be on-call, but not. All are working. More importantly, we're serving about twenty-five to thirty percent of the meals we normally would have served. So there's naturally a, a decrease in revenue. It's nationwide. That's why they put the, the provision in the CARE Act and we'll follow up. We do plan to have an analysis of the financial impacts with the fund balance projection for the April twenty-first Finance Committee meeting. There's several areas where we aren't spending at a rate we used to, whether it's substitute teachers, extra duty, extra, um, equipment that we normally would have gone through. Um, we're lowering utility costs because we're bringing them into summer mode. Uh, but there are naturally some increased expenses, by and large, e-curriculum and IT support for students. That's all I have for today.
Good evening, uh, through, through the board president to the board. My name is Mike Fleckenstein. I am the Chief Information Officer for the district. Got a few topics to talk about tonight. Most of them sort of related to things you may be hearing in the news or from other staff members, maybe students, that sort of stuff. And so, um, uh, I'm going to start with, uh, sort of setting the stage around what we negotiated with. Our local telecom providers to try to help our staff, students and really the community with this online, um, uh, sort of distance learning that, that we're looking at. So, uh, the first thing we did when, when we knew we may be shifting to this is engage our partners with GCI, ACS and MTA. Um, GCI, uh, offered free internet to anybody that didn't have internet and they offered some upgrades to folks that currently had internet with them. And so if you had their, their plan, that was their sort of, uh, entry-level plan, then they would up you to the next one, which. Um, gives you about another two hundred and fifty gigabytes worth of data. Um, uh, initially you would have only had a hundred and fifty, so well more than double, um, what you, what you had previously. If you were in their middle tier, they give you another two hundred gigs in speed along with that. And if you were sort of in their higher tier, they moved you to red, which is unlimited. Um, ACS and MTA both offering free email. Both are. ACS and MTA, both offering free email. Both are unlimited options, so there are no data caps. One thing to know about GCI is if you hear somebody say, you know, I've run out of data, they can still use GCI when they hit that data cap. It just becomes slower. And so you end up only being able to do one thing at a time instead of multiple things at a time. So if we were going to do a Zoom meeting, you're not going to do a Zoom meeting and have somebody else watching Netflix in the room. So we embarked on trying to figure out how much data we were consuming by Zoom so we would understand how much impact this was going to have to staff and students. And so I spent a full day just testing different meetings with folks everywhere from four participants all the way up to 32 participants. I did them all at an hour and then took the actual measurements of bandwidth that was consumed during those times. And so I found that between 400 and 555 megabytes an hour were consumed. And when I looked on the internet, there were some published studies around this that said that high-quality Zoom can use up to 810 megabytes an hour. And so for most of my calculations, I used all of the higher numbers to sort of have worst-case scenario as we look through these. When you think about those free upgrades that GCI gave, if you're not on a plan that went to unlimited, then it means that if Zoom is using the lower end of that bandwidth, then you would get between 500 and 625 additional hours above whatever plan you had before of Zoom for that month. And if it was the worst-case scenario, you would get between 246 and 308 hours of Zoom. And so they're roughly about 150 instructional hours per month. That varies a little bit. And so you can kind of see that the upgrades that were provided at no cost really go above and beyond every minute you could possibly have during instruction. And so with that, I looked at the actual teacher usage for the first week as we rolled this out. And so our highest user used 29 hours, but when I dug into that a little bit further, I found out that that particular teacher just kind of opened up Zoom and left it open and then had kids popping in and out, kind of like an office hours, but never closed it, never really set a time schedule for that. And so that's why that particular one was an outlier, but it wasn't a really heavy bandwidth user either because there weren't a lot of people on at the same time. And then I looked at the averages across all of our teachers that used Zoom. So in the first week, the average high school teacher used it 4.09 hours. The average middle school teacher used it 3.89 hours, and the average elementary school teacher used it 4.33 hours. In fact, there were only 157 people in the entire district that used it more than 10 hours, and mostly those were ed center and departmental. There were some special ed folks in there that had very specific caseloads that they were using Zoom with, and so they tended to spend more time with smaller numbers of folks. And so with that, this graph really kind of illustrates what it looks like, those free upgrades that and this graph really doesn't apply to anybody that has unlimited internet because it doesn't matter at that point. But if you have limited internet and you received that upgrade from GCI, I'll just sort of walk you up this chart. So at the very bottom, there's a dotted black line, and that dotted black line represents the best-case scenario for Zoom based on the averages that we saw that our teachers were using. And so that's how much bandwidth that would use. You move up to the dashed line there, that dashed line represents the high estimate. So how so if they use, really Zoom use the worst settings, then that's where they would be. That green box that you see is 37.5 hours on Zoom. So that would be if you were to use your full contract time as a teacher, that's how much bandwidth you would use if you used it for the full week. And then if you move up from there, and these are all weekly, so this isn't monthly, the red lines, everything is weekly. The blue line that you see was that 29-hour person that we talked about in the last slide. And the dashed dot red line would be the minimum upgrade you would get from GCI if you were on a limited plan. And the solid bar is the maximum upgrade you would get. And so even if you were to use all of your teaching time on Zoom, you wouldn't even reach half of the negotiated free-upgrade grades that we have. Now, obviously, teachers do more than just Zoom, but most of the other activities that are happening, this is really the most bandwidth-intensive version of activity that teachers are doing. With that, you've probably heard in the news, Zoom went from, you know, far back in the pack to number one for usage when the pandemic hit. And because of that, a lot of eyes came on Zoom, which is a good thing. It means that they're having an opportunity to create a better product with better privacy and security controls. One of the things that Zoom was known for is really its ease of use, and because of that, what you're hearing in the news with Zoom bombing and some of those things is that they set their defaults very open so that it's super easy for people to get into meetings and connect. And so that's really how they built, and that's the reason why they were adopted so widely by education, is because they're super easy to use. And so because they're super easy to use, that also adds to the security risk. When you talk about security, there's always a trade-off between usability and security is what I like to say. And so the more security you add to it, the harder it is to use, in most instances, not at all. And so IT, what we did was we brought everybody under our domain in Zoom, so all teachers have a Zoom account for ASD. And if you're using that Zoom account for us, then we hard-lock a bunch of settings in there so that you can't accidentally make a mistake to make things less secure. And so those things are listed in front of you, but we require a meeting password. That's not optional. We put everybody into a wait room before they come into the meeting, so they don't just get to log in in advance. They actually show up in a wait room. And then all of the participants, we mute as they come in so that only the hosts can unmute them. Students, really, we gave the guidance that teachers should make sure that they don't let students in from the waiting room that don't have their real first names. And so they check and then they can actually talk to the folks in the waiting room and and make them change their name to their actual name if it's incorrect. And then we've given guidance that they should positively identify that student as entered a meeting either through voice or seeing their video so that they know that these are their actual students, and if they're not, they can remove them from the room. We turned off private chat, so chat can be from the student to the host or the teacher, but not between students privately. And then we added the feature that allows a teacher to just put somebody on hold if they're not if they're doing something that is not appropriate so that the rest of the class and the teachers can't see them. The other thing we did was provide guidance that small-group instruction or smaller groups are a lot easier to handle when you're talking about this type of technology. If you have 30 or 40 people on a Zoom and you're trying to manage that as a class by yourself, that can be difficult, especially if you have a smaller screen and that sort of thing. And so so I think we've seen, if you look at the trends from day one through day seven, you can see that the number of participants in each of the meetings has gone down, but the number of meetings has gone up for teachers. So I believe that is having a a good effect on the outcomes there. With that, I'll switch to our device distribution update. And so far, we have distributed 3,186 Chromebooks. That was as of yesterday afternoon, so we probably have another 300 or 400 from today. We were finishing up middle school today. And we are in the process of working with Dan Barker's team and all the elementary group to come up with the logistics around elementary. Elementary is a little bit different than high school and middle school just because there are so many sites, and so trying to make sure that we're providing good access to parents and they are able to take advantage of those devices. I do want to let you know that we had about 1,000 hotspots. We have checked out 789 of those. The additional hotspots that you see that are missing there, we have those in reserve at the high school level right now because there are several students that they are still working out the logistics to do those deliveries. And big thank you to Tom Roth and his team for Stuber. That's going to help make that a whole lot easier. And so those devices will end up in kids' hands shortly. We just wanted to make sure that we were hitting the priorities that instruction has for those. We've also, because we are out of those, we're also counseling the students that come to get devices, that they can get free internet from GCI or ACS or MTA. And then we do have an additional 1,300 of those devices on the way. There's just a national backorder on those, and so we hope to get those in the next couple of weeks. And I believe that's it for my update.
Board President and members of the Board, good evening. We will be introducing on Friday, April 10th, a new initiative, not really a new initiative, but more of a streamlined initiative called the Student and Family Wellness Initiative. And this initiative seeks to do three things. It streamlines the process for assisting families in meeting their basic needs, which is the foundation of all of their other needs according to Maslow's hierarchy of needs. And this process includes a follow-up loop. So not only will families be able to call and reconnect them to community resources, but if they so choose to desire us to follow up with them, we can do so. The process maintains a connection to the community partners like the United Ways of Anchorage's 211 and the municipality of Anchorage. It gathers essential data in terms of the type of assistance being requested according to ZIP code to assist really in informing future pandemic or emergency planning. So here's the process. Next slide, please. Thank you. So the process is that a family calls in, an email comes in from a helpful family friend or a neighbor just really wanting to really assist one of our students and their families. A staff member responds. We also wanted to keep inclusive in this process, and this process, I must say, was a cross-departmental cross-departmental collaboration with ELL, Native and Migrant Ed, Children in Transition, Title I Counseling, and to include special education and social emotional learning. And so for families that have a relationship with their school, they can always feel free to call their school, and they can feel free to call the helpline, which will be 742 HELP. It's a pre-existing line, and now they'll have an option for these community-based resources. The staff member will then loop all persons that need to be included on in helping the family so to make sure that there's no duplication of services. A referral will be made to a community resource. We will not, I don't want to say a checklist, because none of our families are, we don't like to use the word checklist. But we will be identifying which category of needs families are calling about. So whether it's mental health to include behavioral supports for students, for parents and students, or whether it's social services or a technology need, we will identify what that need is in the JIRA system. And then the family will be, I don't know if you guys can make it bigger so that, I'm sorry, so that no one has to strain their eyes. Thank you so much.
I think we could just go like this, Sonia.
Okay. And so the family has an option. We want to make sure that the family voice has a presence in this process, and so the family can opt in to whether or not they would like follow-up. If they don't, the JIRA ticket will be closed. If they do, then the Office of Equity and Compliance will make sure that a follow-up call is made to make sure that the family arrives from, goes from need identified all the way to need met. And then the JIRA ticket will be closed, and then we will have the data that we need to inform future emergency and pandemic planning. Thank you so much. This concludes my report. Bard, any questions?
Good evening, Board. This is Mark Stock, Deputy Superintendent. So we're going to do a quick overview in the Instructional Division. And so we'll have Elementary, Secondary, and Special Ed speaking tonight. So some overview from our end, we've had about 1,000 paper packets that got mailed out today. These packets are the modules developed by Teaching and Learning that Dr. Bishop talked about from all those coordinators at the beginning of our introduction tonight. And so those have all been out in the mail, and those spreadsheets of people who need those packets will be continually updated. There'll be new people added, and some people who feel they don't need them will be taken off the list. But our own print shop is able to handle this volume and has a plan to be able to start delivering these paper pencil packets to those who do not have yet any technology access. Individual deliveries, CEO Tom Roth talked a little bit about Stuber, our student Uber deliveries. And so from Special Ed, anyone who needs a special individual delivery of any kind, those will be done by our own drivers for those who need something that can't be mailed. Dr. Bishop has used this phrase a couple of times, and it resonates. It's important to remember that the services that we're offering are not homeschool. What we really are talking about is trying to have a school experience at home. And that's different. And so our brick-and-mortar schools have a niche that's founded on the teacher-student relationship. And that relationship is key to everything. And so one of the things that we've built with all of this is an effort to try to maintain those relationships that have been built over the course of this year. One of the exciting things that's come up out of the elementary that a few teachers have reported is that the teachers feel like they're getting to know many of the parents. In many cases, the parents are joining some of those Zoom sessions with their children, and some of those meetings have really helped parents get to know the teacher as well. Mr., excuse me. Mr. Fleckenstein mentioned that around the nation, there had been some issues with online conferencing, and many of the solutions have been put into place here, and we feel very comfortable with where we're at in terms of how to monitor that. It's important to know that many of the issues that popped up are similar issues that can happen in face-to-face instruction. Some of these disciplinary things are not unique to an online environment. And so we will be consequencing students as we're able to identify those things. So in the retreat, the little that was mentioned with AJ earlier, talked a little bit about progress monitoring during the pandemic, and we finished up with the map testing review and some of those output monitoring devices we used today when Dr. Bishop did her presentation. Going forward, based on the Board's input, we're recommending that we may begin to offer some of the data from our own unique pandemic experience here. And I think Member Bellamy mentioned that as a question earlier in the presentation. So we'll begin some initial monitoring of those inputs, and there's actually a few of them coming up in some of the reports from Elementary and Secondary. We'll be measuring levels of engagement, and we have some preliminary data on some of that tonight. And last of all, daily trainings and open labs, there is a significant amount of staff development and support going on for all our employees who have to work in this new environment. So I just can't tell you how proud I am of the academic team for the work they've cranked out in such a limited period of time. And so that's the overview, and now we'll move to elementary.
Good evening, Superintendent Bishop, Board President Marsette, and members of the School Board. I am Dan Barker, your Senior Director of Elementary Education. Our elementary team and our colleagues and supports in the Teaching and Learning Directors and Staff have been working hard at troubleshooting with principals, teachers, and families as we steer our way to the exciting new opportunities that we know many of these current challenges will eventually represent for us. I'd like to share some of the initial statistics with you. We have after the first couple of weeks of having some of these tools in place at a nearly universal level through our division. Our initial preparations that began during that first week of extended break allowed us to push more than 1,100 elementary course shells out to teachers through the Canvas platform that they have then used to begin providing digital instruction and support. On the basic skills practice front, these would represent those tools that allow skill practice that's intended to prevent the slipping of some of those basic skills that can happen during extended breaks. So in the math lane, we had more than 13,000 of our elementary students who have logged more than 10,000 hours of skill practice using our MathWiz platform, and that's just since the 16th of March. Similarly, in the English Language Arts Avenue, we had more than 8,000 of our elementary students who have logged more than 10,000 hours of skill practice using our MathWiz platform, and that's just since the 16th of March. who've logged more than 20,000 hours of skill practice time on our Alexia platform. And that is since the 9th of March. So those are some of our initial data points. We'll be looking more deeply at those, obviously, as time goes on. And I look forward to speaking with you again about much of that soon.
Hey, good evening, School Board President Marsette and other members of the Board. I am Kirsten Johnson, your Senior Director of Secondary Education, and I'd like to give you an update on secondary schools. I wanted to start by just trying to give you a picture of what a massive amount of work needed to go into prepping our face-to-face classes to a digital platform. When you look at just our high school courses alone across the district, there were 15,000 high school courses offered amongst our high schools across A and B. And so in order to effectively roll out a digital learning platform, we had to get that back to a manageable number to turn into a digital platform. So we consolidated those courses into 450 Canvas courses at the high school level. And those were developed and then they were modified accordingly based on student needs for special education and other groups that needed those modifications from there. So just that alone was a big undertaking that went into the prep work for this digital learning platform. We also took about 12,000 high school students who are typically enrolled in six courses each. And then about 7,700 middle school students who are typically enrolled in seven courses each. And we enrolled them into either Apex at Middle School for Math and Language Arts or Canvas for all the other courses at middle and high school. So that was our next task in the secondary level. Another task that's been a big undertaking that we really wanted to support our teachers, obviously, as we went through this transition. Some of our teachers are really well-versed in online learning and others are brand-new to it. So we wanted to create opportunities for them to get up to speed so that they could really support kids through their learning process, especially at high school where we are still grading and gaining credits for graduation. So in two weeks, we offered 34 trainings for our teachers at the secondary level in Canvas and Apex alone. We've also done a number of site-based trainings. Site-based is kind of ironic because we're digital right now, meaning just within that school staff. So we've appointed actually a Canvas or Apex expert at each building because we do have teachers who are really well-versed in this. And they are serving as kind of the go-to person in their buildings for questions and troubleshooting for our teachers who are not so well-versed. Sorry, my dog's barking. I apologize. So we have more training planned to keep supporting our educators as we continue down this road of digital learning. So we are actually, we also did support staff trainings as well. I forgot to mention that earlier. Just today, we were doing trainings with some of our security staff and how they could monitor student behavior in Zoom sessions as an example. So all of our high school and middle school core courses are active this week, meaning Language Arts, Math, Social Studies, and Science. So those are all active now for our secondary students this week. And then next week, we go live with all of our elective courses. At high school, those are automatic for students. At our middle school level, our school teams are working with families and students specifically to see if this is a load that a student can handle. And different students manage online learning differently. So we want to be really sensitive, especially at middle school where this is a new experience for a majority of our kids, to make sure that we're not giving them too much on their plate. And if it is too much to have additional courses, then we'll just stick to the core courses for students so we can maintain those core academics. We also are supporting students in our ELL population, migrant ed, Indian education, and special education staff, or we're students, sorry, that's supposed to say students, not staff. And so we are trying to meet the needs of all of those groups through this process as well. We rolled out some tutoring sessions specifically for ELL, migrant ed, and Indian education this week. So we have special tutoring hours for students that don't conflict with the office hours of teachers. And then special education is obviously still modifying and providing accommodations as required through special education to our digital learning platform. And then I wanted to just give you an update as a board around graduation because I know that is a very serious issue for our class of 2020. And as you heard in testimony, it's an emotional one for sure. And it's one that I really actually take to heart as a former high school principal because senior year is supposed to be fun. And I really do have a lot of sympathy for our class of 2020 right now as we're going through this. So one thing I wanted to let you know is that we have continued to prioritize seniors through our work. It's our number-one goal is to get our seniors graduated and not delay that life kind of steps that they're taking into the adult world. We also sent a letter specifically to students and families on Friday that really outlines a lot of the questions that have been coming our way. I did receive some good notes back from either students or families that they just really appreciated that we're thinking of them. So I think that's good feedback for the Board to know. Obviously, the big question is can we have a face-to-face graduation? And I just wanted to let you know this week, now that we have kind of a better picture of how this is progressing, high school principals right now are gathering information from students specifically, parent groups, and their staff this week so that we can start gathering information around what can we do if we're not able to do a face-to-face graduation given the pandemic. So at our next board meeting, I'll obviously have more to share around that. And then just looking at some next steps for secondary, we're looking, we don't have quite the tracking system developed automatically within our Canvas platform that some of it is Lexia and other programs that Mr. Barker mentioned in the elementary update. But we are working on that right now so that we can really track student engagement. That's really our big task for us this week is we want to get drilled down into that to make sure kids are logging on, they're making progress, all of those good things. And then we obviously want to make some decisions around graduation ceremonies so that our families can plan and our students know what to count on. And then we're going to just continue our support for students, staff, and families as you've heard throughout this presentation. So that concludes my update. And I will turn it over to Cindy Anderson for Special Education.
So President Marsette and Board members, I just wanted to let you know that we continue to work to serve our Special Education students' unique needs. And also, we want to make sure we're addressing staff needs as well. So each week, we have a calendar of trainings up for Special Education. Last week, we maxed out at 101 of our events. And so we're repeating that this next week. And today, we did a training on Universal Design for Distance Learning for Special Education and had 85 attendees. So wanted to let you know that we will continue to provide trainings and we're also creating new trainings as we see needs arise. We've also are looking at how we can support our Special Education staff. There's been a little bit of a struggle with the data collection and capturing all the services we're providing. And so we're going to be setting up individual group and, I mean, group and individual opportunities to meet with one of our administrators and walk through the process so we can simplify that and make it reasonable and meaningful for collecting that information about what we're doing for our students because our staff are doing amazing work for our kids. And then working with individual family concerns that come through, we're working with those as they come in individually. Our teams are making sure we're addressing those needs and reaching out to families as they're working to try to figure out some of the new online systems of teletherapy and Zoom and other things and making sure we're getting the best services we can to our families. So thank you.
Madam President, thank you and the Board. I know that was a lot to take in. That is a lot of work. Lots of teachers teach it every day and other support staff doing all those. As we can streamline out that you have a bigger mind's eye about all the different pieces and parts that are going into this and be able to continue to update you. That we can take questions now and as you ask, if you'd like to, whatever topic it is, that person will just jump on staff. If you could unmute and answer that question if you have it. Thank you.
And the first one we have in queue is Deana Mitchell.
Okay, well, I have several questions that have come up during that process. But I'll start with, I think, the two that are sort of most top of mind. A couple are just quick answer questions.
So maybe, Ms. Mitchell, I didn't mean to interrupt, but maybe if we could limit it right now to the two questions per Board member so we can get everybody in and then we can come back.
Okay. So my first question is, I'm really, really pleased to see all the safeguards that have been put into place with Zoom since we first started using it because, you know, some of the videos that I saw from the first two or three days were pretty horrible. And it's unfortunate that those things are going to be out in social media for eternity. I do know that particularly at the high school level, we have teachers in our district who don't share their cell phone numbers, don't do Facebook. They're very concerned about their privacy. I know I personally have a book group at church and we were going to do a Zoom meeting and several of the people there were concerned about using Zoom because of the issues around privacy. I guess, I think the guidelines and the restrictions that have been put into place have helped tremendously. But we still have, especially on the secondary school level, teachers who really aren't comfortable using Zoom. And I'm curious, A, about if we force them to do that, are we opening ourselves up to liability? And B, if as a teacher, I am able to, for example, you know, have my students email me with questions, talk to them on the telephone, maybe FaceTime with them if I need to do something one-on-one, is that, are we giving our teachers that flexibility to figure out what works for them? And obviously, they are all very concerned about helping their students. And then the second question is, I, well, the second question, I guess, then I'll get back in the queue, is our SPED teachers in particular, I know, are really, really feeling like they are drowning. I mean, they are just trying to, I mean, I could go through the whole list of their care case workers. They're trying to deliver facilities. They're doing their IEP meetings. They're, they just, they are absolutely drowning. And I would love to know more about how we're supporting them.
Sure. And I'm going to ask, both of those questions actually have been discussed this week. We meet three times a week with Tom Claymire and those two specifically were the topics each day. So I'll turn it over to Mark as he works with those instructional staff.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. And so the first question with regards to the use of Zoom. Yes, we agree, we have taken care of the vast majority of those issues. The real issue here in my mind is that the purpose of the Zoom piece is simply to maintain the relationships that have already been established. That's the brick and mortar niche, right? Otherwise, we'd just be another homeschool right now. And so maintaining those relationships is very critical. And we recognize that there are some folks that, there's a limited, a small number of folks who remain uncomfortable with it. But I would, I would offer that we've beefed up with the security pieces. We've also offered out that any teacher who's uncomfortable with that can have either the security or other folks be able to join them in the room so that they're never with the children alone. There's also opportunities for them, once they've identified all the students, that they can choose the extent to which the cameras are on or off with the small group or suggesting small numbers of students. And if there's any particular individuals, and we believe we're down to a small number that this would affect, that they should talk to their supervisor if they have a privacy reason that extends beyond what would be normal. But in our minds, we even have teachers here that can't literally do their jobs without Zoom. So example, teletherapy. Or maybe they could use Microsoft Teams or something else, but they can't do it without a video software program. So examples would be our special needs teachers who do teletherapy, licensed therapists. And so we believe we can work individually with folks on that. But right now, that is our chosen piece of software and we believe we've taken care of most of those problems. As far as the workload on the SPED staff, I believe that Mrs. Anderson and her group is working through trying to work those out. And we have been in communication with AEA President multiple times a week. Dean and I meet with him three times a week and go through the day's issues that come up. And we believe our IT department has researched this very thoroughly and has a pretty good handle on it. So that would be my answer. Thank you, Ms. Mitchell.
So basically, the teachers, they have to use Zoom. If they feel more comfortable using something else, that's not really an option for them. Or if they feel like they can do it on the phone. I mean, obviously, you know, a therapist needs to use something that's visual, whether it's, I mean, anyway, yeah, okay.
So what, some of the provisions we have done are that invite-only so that if they, well, they can invite and then the security guards as well as TAs can sit in that session. And when they invite, it might be one student or four students. Really, that, to have that access with them, we have two adults that could be in the room if they don't feel comfortable. But other than their email address that students have access to, the Zoom account wouldn't give any personal information out on any of our teachers. So we're hoping that when we talked to Tom, representing the concerns this week, he thought that that would be a good balance to allow for not just open Zoom hours, but invites so that it's very, very controlled and we deal with the bad actors. Because now we're finding that it's just students that could technically misbehave in a classroom, may misbehave, and we want other eyes on that. And that's the reason the security guards were trained. But Cindy Anderson might have some more information about the SPED issue because that is correct. There's additional work, as we know, with Special Education documentation. So she could touch on that.
So to let you know, I did have a conversation with Mr. Claymire this morning. And I believe what I'd like to do, and that was one of the bullet points, was to, I've met with a couple of teachers, walked them through some of the data collection that is concerning. And I think we were able to resolve some of those issues just by having that conversation and understanding of where they are in that data collection process. So we were, our team is going to build some work sessions and have people be able to go into breakout groups, either one-on-one or in small group. And we'll walk teachers through the process and check in with them and make sure that we make this a reasonable request of collecting data and documenting services. On the other side, what we also, and I don't want to promise anything, but we do need to look at some opportunities, maybe to give some relief for teachers who have a lot of meetings and things. And we'll be working on a plan with Dr. Stock and others to see if we can do that for teachers in Special Education. And I think we probably just need to figure out exactly how much time they're spending on Zoom and how many hours of support they're needing to give and seeing if we can't find some relief for them for that. So I think we can work through these issues. It's just, we're all in a new, unique situation. I'm learning as much as anyone else through this process. It's so new. So 36 years and this is just all brand-new for me. So thank you.
And Ms. Hildy, you are up next, please.
Thank you. Could somebody just explain the 15,000 high school courses consolidated to 450 Canvas courses? I just don't know what that means.
Member Hildy, through President Marsette, this is Kirsten Johnson from secondary. So essentially, I'll just give an example to kind of understand it better. All of our freshmen have to take English 1 as a course their freshman year. When you look at English 1, we have many different course codes that actually give you that English 1 credit. It could be an ELL course that's the English 1. It could be a special education course that's English 1 as an example. So there's a variety of different course codes that actually count for that English 1 credit. What we had to do was take all of those course codes, consolidate it down into one English 1 credit within the distance learning platform so that we could convert it to that platform. And then once that has been established now, now teachers can do their work to modify it to their specific needs of their students. So that's how it went from like this really large age number. So that's how it went from like this really large number down to a smaller number. That, that modification work is still happening and that variety of the teaching methods for students are still happening. But we had to get it back, back to a manageable number so we could get it into our digital platform.
Okay, if we could have Ms. Vakalis, please.
Thank you. I have two questions and it's possible they could be answered by the same person. The first one is, I've talked to, you know, many concerned parents, you know, on the communication, whether it's at home, you know, communication at home with families to students or even through Zoom meetings and staff to students, that middle school and elementary grades have a perception of not being counted, therefore not important, therefore it's, it's, the educational value is being lost. And you can feel where that disengagement is coming. And how can we ensure that we're communicating, you know, as educators, as parents, that this is still very important to stay engaged so we don't lose this whole quarter? And just trying to wrap my head around it, just, you know, from all, all hats that I wear, you know, and when I keep hearing this across the board from a lot of parents, I figure it's probably worth asking and getting some, you know, advice and guidance on. Then the second question was a much shorter one, is how are instructional coaches being used? You guys have talked about all the different, you know, behind the scenes kind of people and stuff like that. We know teachers and nurses and student nutrition and all their roles. But here's one that I didn't have an answer for when the question was posed, instructional coaches and what they're doing now. Thank you.
Well, this is Mark Stock, deputy. I'll take a quick stab at the communication question and then maybe Jenny Knudsen would be available to talk about the instructional coaches if she's able to. So as far as communication, this has always been an issue for us and it will always be an issue in education with this many people trying to communicate regularly. And part of it, quite frankly, is the reason why we're reluctant to say, you know, you don't need to, to interact with video conferencing with students or parents and not to use Zoom. Many of our elementary teachers in particular are finding that is a great way to connect with the families. Our communications department has done an amazing job of trying to tell the stories. And I don't think anything can ever replace the direct teacher outreach directly to the, to the families that they're working with. And I, I don't know that there's any answer beyond that. I can tell you the communication flow from elementary and secondary senior directors, Dan and Kirsten, has been unbelievable. They, they put multiple updates out to administration every single day. They come out late into the night sometimes and very lengthy. So there's tremendous amounts of communication going on, on there. And so I, I, I don't know if I have a perfect answer, but I can tell you that it's on our minds every day and I feel like we're, we're doing a pretty-
Mark, could you touch on the communication regard to education from K.A. not being valued because there's no grading? I think that was specifically to that. And you touched on it on Monday night in regard to that. I mean, it's just kind of funny, uh, Member Vakalis, because we actually have high school that also want that too. So it's kind of what you have, you want the opposite. So we're just kind of keep things moving along. But they, I, just based on grading.
Sure, great. Grading right now is a, is a national issue. This is something that every district is struggling with. And I've seen every gamut from districts that are going to say, just give everyone an A. That has been put out there. I've heard others that say, we'll never give any grades. Here's the example that I would give. Grades are feedback and there isn't anything that I would say wrong with teachers K through eight giving grades to students as feedback. The question is, is whether those feedbacks should roll into your cumulative grade card for a year. And the answer I would give to that is, we have kids who don't have access to any of this. I wouldn't give a kid a 30 classroom of students and say, you 10 do not get a textbook, but I am going to grade you on it, but you have no textbook. I'm going to give you a grade and I'm going to roll it into your, your permanent record. So the grading piece is an equity kind of thing. But certainly, I think it's okay for teachers to provide feedback to students as far as grades, as far as feedback, how they're doing. Question is, should we roll that into their cumulative record for a permanent grade card record? So that, that would be my answer for that.
Good evening. This is Jenny Knudsen and through the president, a member of Vakalis, I'd like to talk a little bit about instructional coaches. That's a great question because we have a lot of support people in the schools. Right now, the instructional coaches are meeting as a large group once a week. And part of the work that they're doing is learning about the content that's pushed out to teachers every week so they have a good understanding and can be able to support individual teachers at their school and how to scaffold it and how to differentiate it and really be there as a support for the teachers to be able to contact families if needed and follow up with them. They're also learning right alongside with the teachers, the technology. So Seesaw and Canvas and Google Classroom, some of these are new tools for instructional coaches, just like our teachers. So they are learning side by side with them so that they can help support them on the technology side as well. So we're developing their skills and, and then the other thing is they provide us feedback. So it gives us feedback on what is, you know, how is the content going out? What, what are teachers saying so we can make adjustments as we, as we go forward?
Hey, Dina, I'm going to let Margo go next and we'll come back to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a quick question for Jim. So I, I thought it was like illegal to supplant federal funds. How are we going to navigate that? And if we get any money, when will, how long will it be, any extra funding in your estimate?
Okay, I'll start with the first question, whether it's legal or not. I think when the governor uses terms like supplant, I don't think he's using it, one, in an educational sense, as if it's Title I funds. Where you have equitable and balancing out across all schools. I think he's using it in terms of replacing state funds with federal funds under the CARE Act. There are already quite a few business officers who, who are also looking at the CARE Act. There's a couple very specific requirements in the CARE Act. One is for a state to receive federal funds, you have to basically guarantee that you will fund FY21 and FY22 fairly and in accordance with a three-year rolling average. So the reality is, if you choose, this year we had House Bill 287. So, and, and the 30 million outside the formula was about equal to that. So if the governor chooses to not allow the 30 million and instead to use federal funds, in reality, our state funding next year would drop by $8 million and probably in violation of the three-year rolling average for required state funding. However, also in the CARE Act, it's very clearly stated that the Secretary of Education can waive that requirement. So I suspect that although that, that process hasn't been followed through yet, that there certainly are people on the governor's staff indeed who will be looking at that. Kind of questions when you look at state bond debt reimbursement as to whether that's a valid use of the federal funds. That statement or that requirement for the three-year rolling average came about from 2009. In 2009, there were 138 federal declared disasters. There were a lot of states that used the federal money, cut the state education money and kind of did exactly what our governor talked about today. And so their intent was to have state-funded education and then federal on top of. But again, if they put waivers in, there's a waiver for everything and we'll just have to play this out.
Hey, Dina Mitchell.
Sorry, sometimes it takes me a minute to unmute. Well, and I also meant to start my last comments with, again, just the amount of work that the district has done at the administrative level and at the school level and at the teacher level and at the, you know, custodial level and everything is phenomenal. So I hope that this is not, you know, my questions are really questions, they're not criticisms. This is absolutely a huge learning curve for everybody. I'm curious, when Ms. Petronas was talking, she mentioned all the wonderful things our nurses are doing and I've actually talked to a couple of them and it's just great how much they're able to support the community. I'm curious if they are still on the buses that are traveling around. And I'm also wondering, I think there was even an article in the paper this week about our, you know, we have a lot of abuse in Alaska. Unfortunately, that's one of the things that we excel in. And with people at home more and with people out of work, there are more situations. I think we talked about this last week. Have our bus drivers been trained in, do they understand a little bit about the concept of adverse childhood experiences? And do they have any kind of knowledge in that? I guess with another question there. I was also really pleased to hear about Campfire and 36 students who are children who can be taken care of, of first responders and hopefully if we need that more, that can be expanded. And then I also wanted to follow up on Member Vakalis's question. I think there is a lot of stress right now out there as things get rolling and there's a lot of just confusion and lack of understanding. People are concerned that their students may not be promoted next year because they feel that maybe they're not getting enough learning this quarter of the school year. People are concerned that their students aren't going to graduate because the amount of learning maybe in the high school or the, the Canvas that they're doing might not be equivalent to what they would have gotten in the classroom. So, and even I, I've talked to several teachers who are, you know, some of them are two teacher households. I think Dr. Bishop even talked about this in one of her updates to the community, where they're trying to juggle the bandwidth in their home with their Zoom meetings and keeping up with their students. And yet they're also trying to help their elementary students keep up with school. They don't really know how to do that. There's just a lot of anxiety. So I think in, however, we can make it very clear to families that, to Dr. Stock's point about the equity issue, you know, we certainly want and hope and believe that there can be a lot of student learning this quarter. But we also understand there are many, many challenges and we are certainly not going to penalize 46,000 students for this crisis that we find ourselves in. So that was a lot, but I'm just trying to put all of my questions and, and comments out at once. So I don't know if you need me to repeat any of that.
I'll have Jennifer touch on the nurses.
Through President Marsette to Member Mitchell, the nurses are no longer on the buses because their particular skill set was needed other places within the community. So we thought it was just best to move them to places like the Health Department and Emergency Operations Center. Our nurses will be getting trained again by OCS on Monday just to let our nurses know and our counselors what it is they've been seeing within the community, what their spikes are in the types of cases that OCS has been seeing so that our nurses can be more familiar with that as well. Because they do answer those 211 calls and they are required to call all of our sped and life skill students every week so they can be looking out for those type of situations as well.
And what about the bus drivers? Are they, do they have any kind of awareness of the, of adverse childhood experiences and what some signs might be of situations that might need some support?
Through, through the board president to Member Mitchell, I, I don't think so, to, to answer your question specifically, not, not to that level of detail.
Okay, I have, are there any more? Get all your questions answered?
Madam Chair.
I have Elise Vakalis next. And then is that you, Ms. Bellamy?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, after Vakalis, you can go.
Thank you. Just one last quick question and this is probably for HR. Do we have either a number or, and if, if can't answer this right now, I understand, a number or a percentage of teaching staff that are unable to perform their duties due to the crisis? You know, maybe a measurement of the two leave options that were referenced in the slide, the, you know, extended FMLA or the emergency COVID. And if they are direct teaching staff, who is covering their classes at this point? Because I'm guessing we're probably not using subs the same way as we have previously. So, thank you.
Thank you, Matt Teeford, HR, through the president to Member Vakalis. We, we've approached this in a couple of different ways and to your first question, I, I don't have a, a number to give you on the number of teaching staff who aren't available. We, of course, did have a number of staff already out on, on planned leaves of one type or another. And so we, we did have some and do have some long-term subs continuing to fill, fill in for those positions. I believe that the telework option has provided flexibility to many of the teaching staff who otherwise might have some concern around whether it's health-related or other, putting them in a higher risk category that, that, that otherwise presented concern. So that telework option, I believe, has, has helped in that regard. And finally, there is some effort underway with Peggy Rankin and talent management working together with elementary and secondary to develop a pool of long-term subs to cover various content areas and age, age levels in the event that we do have teachers who go out on, on leave from, from here on out. So we will have some number of folks with training in advance so that they're ready to, to fill in to those positions should that need arise.
Hey, Ms. Bellamy.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Going back to Jim, Jim, my, the second question was a timeline question. Did you, do we have a timeline on when, when we might get the-
Through the president-
COVID money.
Through the president to Member Bellamy, we don't have an exact timeline at this point, but everything I've read is that they're trying to get money pushed out in the next four weeks. There is a lot of ambiguity in the, in the legislation, so it got passed to department level. And those staffs now are working out the details, the things we talked about as to appropriate uses of the funds and maybe additional constraints. So we expect it before the end of the school year, which, you know, quite honestly, if, if we get the dollar amount in the next 30 days or so, whether we actually get the money before one July or not, really won't impact our ability to plan, build a receivable, to take those funds in and, and use them throughout the school year.
Okay, and my, thank you. And my last question is for Matt, Mr. Teeford. So FMLA is just leave, it doesn't give pay. And then, so, so the emergency, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking, I, I mean, help me with this. So the emergency COVID-19, the 80 days, does that, is that with pay?
I'm sorry, that, it's 80 hours, so-
80 hours, I'm sorry, yes. 10 days.
So both, to Member Bellamy, through the president, both of the new leave provisions under the FF-CRA do come with pay.
With pay.
So you're, you're correct, that is, that is, that does differ from the rest of the FMLA. The, the amount of pay is dependent. There, there are caps on each, up to a certain percentage of salary and then an overall cap and, and, but both are accompanied with pay. The FMLA expansion is not paid in the first two weeks of the benefit. However, the member, the employee may be entitled to the COVID-19 emergency leave pay during that period. So as a, as a practical matter, an entire 12-week period of, of pay for, for example, a childcare need could, could through the extended FMLA provision, cover with pay that, that period of, of leave. The leave benefit is not stackable, so it, it is an additional period of 12 weeks of leave for a member or an employee who's already used the leave for some other FMLA qualifying reason. But if, if the, if the employee has availability of all 12 weeks, then, then that is available to them.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, oh, I didn't know if there was any, there, there were two, if, if the board would like very short, under two-minute video of- video of secondary and elementary kids and teachers doing this type of work, if the Board would like to have a mind's eye at that.
That would be great, but I have, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
And actually, not so many questions as comments. And one of the comments is Mr. Anderson. Even though we're getting this money in lieu of what the governor has vetoed, I mean, there are, and we don't know what all those are going to be yet, but there will be expenses associated with this COVID nineteen that we're going to have to cover with those funds, correct?
That's correct. We, we will have some additional expenses. And what I'll try to lay out on the twenty-first at the Finance Committee meeting is not only do we have extra expenses, but we also have cost savings. We have areas where we're not spending the amounts of money that we had budgeted for. And we're still awaiting things like utility costs and fuel costs and some other stuff. So on the twenty-first, I think we'll be able to give you a pretty good, comfortable feel. And I think what you're going to see is that our expenses, at least right now, do not appear to significantly outweigh the cost savings. So.
Yeah, one of the things, though, with that, that we had to pull back on was the interest in, it came up earlier about equity, about running, once the social distancing lift is off and we can meet larger groups to maybe get schools started early for some kids to get caught up if they miss things. We had some ideas about additional summer schools that we could run at, at a greater scale than normally, and, and we're thinking about that money. So some of the plans in that regard would be pulled back, you know, depending. So we'll, we'll bring those as well.
Yeah, and I guess my thoughts on that were that is also part of the COVID nineteen, and that is what that federal money is for. So you know, I just want to caution us to think that, you know, we have this money and it's in lieu of the money the governor's going to give us, but basically we're just not getting what we need to operate. And now they're requiring us to take funds away from things that we would need to do to, for the betterment of our students because of this COVID nineteen and actually have to operate the district with us. So that's just a comment I have. The other comment I have is when we talk about delivery of education. You know, I, I've talked to, again, a lot of parents and, and, and just gotten a lot of feedback and frustration from parents. I mean, think of a parent that might have two high school students, two elementary students. You know, Ms. Michaelis, I know that you can attest to this, and, and so can Ms. Hildy, but, and Mr. Donley, but, you know, trying to work out those schedules and keeping everybody on track and you know, I had one person that's frustrated because they have a special needs student and being able to step up as they need to or can to help with their students' education. And I think at this point, it is very important to remember that students are not going to do as well. If we gave them grades, there's that possibility they wouldn't do as well because everybody is under so much stress. So I am really in favor of this. Let's just try to maintain right now. I think that's the best in as far as helping with mental health and the stress our families and teachers are facing. So those are just my two comments. Yes, Dr. Bishop, I think we'd love to see those videos.
Sure. The beauty of this is that I think educators are getting the, the praises of, of doing such a great job now that everyone is, is doing it. They're seeing the value of a teacher, which is wonderful. So we're just going to look at elementary. Teacher sent this to me, and this was a teacher who really shared how great getting to know her parents were of her kids, but she does a a video and sends it out to them just if they want to log in or not, and to make a connection. So we shortened it, it was longer, a longer lesson. But we just made it two minutes, we cut out some. Do we have the words on there, Mike? Mike, I don't know, we, we don't hear any volume on there. But just, that's just a little piece. I don't know if others don't have that. I just want to share that the beginning of it with the, she actually sang a song to them every morning. She's doing a lesson on perseverance and, and really made a little fun video. We'll share that with you. A teacher from Homestead is really enjoying the creativity this brings, but didn't seem like the, the volume is going to work. The audio isn't working, Mike. So just want to share that. The next one is, I'll just go ahead and go to the second one. So, and then this was just done by kids, and basically if you don't hear their words either, just for time's sake, they are giving their thanks.
Mike, you have to unmute yourself so we can hear the sound.
We'll send these out to the Board just to share with you, just for the technical difficulties of playing the movie over this. It, we had it worked out this morning, but we don't hear anything, Mike. So I just want to let you know, we'll send these out, but these are a, a good twenty-twenty-five students thanking their teachers for connecting with them and doing everything that they can to try to make school the best that it can, which was unsolicited. The kids just did it themselves. And of course, the other one was just a, a teacher that is, is just having, having some creative days every morning, but her voice is beautiful and she sings to the kids every morning. And that was what that sun sunrise was about. So I'll get these out to the Board in a, in a different venue so that you could just click on them and watch them yourselves. And then you won't see them, we, we cut them down anyway. So you can see the full scale. With that, Madam President, that's all we had. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. And Board members, hear me? Can you guys hear me? Okay. We're going to move on to consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda, ASD memorandum number one zero seven Personnel Report, January seven, twenty twenty, regular session minutes, January twenty-first, twenty twenty, work session, executive session, and regular session minutes.
And Madam President, if you can just give me a moment, let me just get the screen shared. I had to re-sign in to Board Docs. And let me get us back up and running. All right, I am back up and running. I will go ahead and proceed with a voice vote then for the consent agenda. Member Mitchell.
Yes, thank you. Yes.
Member Bellamy.
Yes.
Member Holloman.
Yes.
President Marsete.
Yes.
Member Michaelis.
Yes.
Member Donley. I'll come back to Member Donley, give him a chance to unmute. Member Hildy. Member Donley, are you there? I'm going for your voice vote for the consent agenda. President Marsete, would you like me to wait or just mark him at not, not present at vote?
No, he, he put his thumb up.
Oh, he did? Oh, I, I'm sorry.
His mute button is off. Sometimes, Member Donley, if you could unplug and then replug in your earphone, sometimes that does the trick. That's happened.
And I apologize. I cannot see Member Donley on my screen right here.
Okay, all right. Well, that agenda, consent agenda passes with seven yays and zero nays. So I don't believe we have any testimony on action items. And we won't be able to have anybody sign up at the last minute. We don't have anybody for testimony, do we, Miss Katie?
That is correct, President Marsete. No one signed up for testimony on action items.
Okay, okay. I am not going to read the testimony section of this because it's really not going to pertain right now. But we'll just move forward.
Okay, I move to approve ASD memorandum number one one twelve-two and accept a grant award from the Alaska Mental Health Trust Authority for seventy-five thousand dollars to implement mental health consultative services in four Title One schools, Fairview, Mountain View, Northwood, Willowah, serving preschool students for the remainder of the twenty nineteen, twenty school year and for the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year.
Second.
Is there any board discussion or questions? Seeing no questions or comments, Board members, please vote.
Member Marsete, would, would, would you like us to maybe get Mr. Donley on a cell phone to connect? He can do video here and then we could have an open cellphone line. I, I can connect him to mine, and so he can talk through mine to you guys? Or Katie, would you like him to call you?
Dave, I can see you, so either do a thumbs up or whatever, if that works for you. All right, let's do it.
But he might have comments, I'm, I'm not sure, but we can set that up if you'd like.
All right.
Okay, I will proceed with a voice vote then. Member Mitchell.
Yes.
Member Hildy.
Yes.
Member Donley. And I do not see Member Donley if he is giving a thumbs up. If someone could let me know his vote.
Thumbs up, yes.
Thank you. Member Michaelis.
Yes.
Member Marsete.
Yes.
Member Holloman.
Yes.
Member Bellamy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and that memorandum one twelve passes with seven yays, zero nays.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number ninety-six, the adoption of Ready Mathematics published by Curriculum Associates as the mathematics instructional material for grades K through eight. It is also the administration's recommendation that the school board approve a transfer of funds in the amount of one point five million for implementation through twenty twenty, twenty-one school year.
Second.
Okay, and is there any board discussion or comments? And I know Mr. Donley has something.
Yes, President Marsete, I am able to call Member Donley from, or through Zoom. Let me, let me go ahead and do that and see if we can get him on the line that way.
Okay.
In the, the meantime, in anticipation of his motion, I just wanted to ask if the administration could comment if there is concern about delaying a vote on this issue for a, a period of time.
Does it need to get on, on the, it's already been moved to second. So I'll let Mr. Stock handle that one with that timeline in working through on the instructional side, or Dr. Stock or Dr. Knutson?
Well, I'll take a first stab and then let Dr. Knutson chime in. This is Mark Stock to the President through, through the President. I would recommend that we continue to push forward on this. Our, our vendors and our folks have done the procurement. I mean, not vendors, I mean, our procurement team has worked and negotiated this in good faith and has really worked hard to get the, the, the deal that we've got. And I think the longer this drags on, I don't think that's particularly good in this environment. And I believe we should, should move forward on it. That's my opinion. Now, is there some great legal problem or some problem if we don't? No, we can probably work around it, but I think our team would prefer to get going. As you all know, from seeing the data, math is even lower scores than our reading right now. And in terms of looking at the, the Board's outcomes, I think an upgraded math program is essential, and I would encourage us to continue on. If this gets, I'm sorry, Mr. Anderson had a comment too, I'm sorry.
And I just saw it at the same time. So the message, sorry, Dr. Stock, the message from Jim that just came to us was that ASD would not be able to procure, receive, and issue the pilot materials in time if it gets delayed from this point. So the timing of receiving them to do the pilot next year would be delayed. That was just his comment in regard to the purchase.
Yeah, that was, that was going to be my comment, is would it throw us off our timeline? That we have a timeline to get it in here and get the training and do our pilot and that sort of thing. So. Have we got Mr. Donley yet?
Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes.
Madam Chair, can you hear me? Madam Chair, can you hear me? Oh.
Yes, I can, Mr. Donley. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, fine. And I could hear everything that was discussed previously, yes. I had a discussion with the President of the Matsu School Board yesterday. And they had also, their administration had also recommended the adoption of Ready Math. But the Board had asked quite a few questions, and at some point, the administration withdrew their request for a vote on, on it and said they wanted to go back and study it some more. Because there are a lot of questions about Ready Math that, that need to be addressed. Okay, could you hear any of what I just said?
Mr. Donley, could you repeat that? I'm sorry, I lost. No, my internet connection was lost and I had to reconnect.
Let me make one more attempt with these headphones again. I'm just going to set the phone aside and see if I can get these headphones to work.
Mr. Donley, you can be, you're heard very well using that phone, just to let you know. Remember, Marsete just lost her connection, but it wasn't you. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, okay, so what I, what I said, President Marsete, was that in discussion with the members of the Matsu School Board, they were presented with a very serious, a very similar, exactly the same situation, actually. And the, the administration chose not to proceed, so they didn't have an actual vote on it, but they were scheduled to have a vote on it, but instead they delayed that because they wanted to get more public comment and more examination of the efficacy of Ready Math. And I think that's a very good course of action on their, their part, and I think we should follow that example and delay adopting a new math curriculum until we've had much more public opportunity to comment and participate. It used to be in this district that there was a lot more public interplay with the curriculum process. And it wasn't until twelve years ago that the public aspects of this got really reduced. And they also used to have a more polling, a more participation by more teachers that each teach those specific curriculum. And we've lost that over the years, and that's very concerning. And I think with all that's been happening in the last month and two months, and with the, I don't think there was very much reach out at all from the district to the general public, there was some opportunities, but last meeting when I asked how many members of the public actually had a chance to participate, actually came. There was no answer from the, from the administration. It was just that they didn't have a sign-in sheet, so they didn't know. And I'm very concerned that the average citizen in Anchorage doesn't have any idea that this decision's being made. And that a lot of people who normally would be very interested in participating are, have been other things going on. And they haven't had the opportunity to participate and get up to speed on this decision. And this is really is a momentous decision. I mean, we're talking about almost seven million dollar commitment over a series of years. The initial amount, of course, is, you know, less than two million dollars, but it really gets us on the track for spending very close to seven million. And there are some serious concerns about the training components, and that was raised in the Matsu debate or discussion about this. And I'm frankly really surprised that the Anchorage budget doesn't include anywhere near what the Matsu school district was told would be necessary for training expenses. Because with their nineteen thousand students, their training expenses were running over two million dollars. And those were identified not being an initial, initial proposal before them. But my understanding from Dr. Stock is that all the training But my understanding from Dr. Stock is that all the training expenses are incorporated into this. And so I find it really hard because if you could extend it to understand, because if you extend that $2 million out over our students, you're talking, you're looking at about $5 million in training expenses. So I did have some questions about that also. But I really think the wisest course of action at this point would be to let the public really get educated that this is going on, allow more public input, allow more input from our teachers in this process, and to delay this vote.
Okay, I've got Ms. Bellamy in the queue.
Oh, did you say Bellamy?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So we have been... I need to disclose that my daughter does work for the assessment department. And so, not assessment, I'm sorry, teaching and learning. But that said, so that's a disclosure and I'm not sure what you want to do with that. But from my perspective, I have not heard anything that compels me to delay a vote with the process that we have. The superintendent is making a recommendation based on a process. Now, we may not like the process and we may want to improve the process, but it seems to me that there was a process. And delaying this is not going to bring in a preferred level, a preferred program for any of us. We all get one vote, so we voted up, we voted down, but we need to move past this. I cannot imagine us taking up more of the administration's time and energy to try and derail the vote. I mean, I'm just, so I will be voting, yes, to move forward with this because I just, I have not heard anything that Matsu can do its thing. We're Anchorage School District and yes, we can learn from each other. But, you know, our curriculum is our curriculum, our process is our process. So I will be voting to move forward. I will be voting to approve the math adoption unless there is some reason why this body does not want me to participate based on my connection.
At this point, I would ask the... Hold on a second. I'm going to let Deana Mitchell go first and then I'll respond to that question, Ms. Bellamy.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I know that we had a board member who participated or at least observed this committee and my understanding is that that board member felt that the process was good and enjoyed being part of it and thought it was thorough and very professional. Member Donley, is your concern about the training component simply that you don't think we have enough money budgeted based on what the Matsu had budgeted for their district? Or is there a concern that the training that this curriculum provides or this vendor provides isn't adequate? I didn't really understand that.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Donley.
Okay. I was trying to reconcile the testimony that the Matsu School Board got versus the projections we're getting regarding the final total costs of this program in that their projections was that the training component was going to run $2 million for 19,000 students. And we've got, you know, two and a half times as many students as Matsu does. And so if you extrapolated that out, we'd be looking at about $5 million worth of training. And if the total proposal before us now is estimating a $7 million cost, I was trying to understand how that was possible.
Okay, well, I'm going to let Mr. Holloman speak and then I'm going to ask for Dr. Bishop.
I was going to say, I generally am sympathetic to the idea that the board should always look closely and be involved in this. But I think it's something that we have to do, starting at the beginning of the process, and not literally at the 12th hour. Unfortunately, this isn't really about delaying it for two weeks. If we're really going to ask detailed questions and involve the public and do other things, really talking about it a delay of months and we would be putting this off by a whole year. If there was no process behind this, that might be completely justified. But we have gone through the process that we have arrived at this point where really we're just giving final approval. And it seems like this has come up in others.
I'm unable to hear Mr. Holloman.
Yeah, did we lose him?
Um...
Oh, there he is.
I can hear him again.
I don't know.
Okay. Did you have any other comments, Mr. Holloman?
Looks like he's gone again.
Okay, well, I think people are dropping off. Can everybody hear me? Okay, so Dr. Bishop, if I could have you or Mark respond?
Sure, Madam President. Dr. Stock was involved with this process with Dr. Knutson, Dr. Bellamy, and others. And so I will turn it over to him. He's also, Jim Anderson, as well as had some conversations with Matsu in their procurement, so we can just share the differences there.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop and Madam President and to the rest of the board. So one of the things that happens is individual districts handle their own negotiations with vendors. And why there would be a difference is really a problem, you know, an issue for the vendor to address. Really, we all do our own work with districts. And in fact, it's possible even the very reason that Mr. Donley mentions of us being two and a half times larger might even be the reason because there's a leveraging aspect that comes into this with our size. We negotiated the digital components, the professional learning and all the training, all the shipping costs and all the hard copy curriculum and the digital rights to all of this, all in one package and spread it out over a period of years to be able to stagger the payments. And it was through the hard work of procurement and Mr. Anderson's team that did that. I don't know what all was included in theirs and that would really be an issue for the vendor to address. And so we've got a bundled package that's pretty good and that's all I have to say. That's pretty much the reasons and I can't speak to anything that Matsu did. I don't know if Mr. Anderson wants to add to that or not.
Just a little bit. When you look at buying curriculum, the core curriculum, the textbooks, it's all part of the consortium. They're going to be the same price no matter what. Where you make your gains or your savings is trying to negotiate all of those other things around the periphery that go into making a curriculum happen. And in Matsu's case, honestly, I'm not sure why they chose not to try to include everything individual or hold into one big contract. Nor is it really my place to know whether they have a policy that precludes them from doing that. But when Dave and his team and Cherry and Jenny rolled everything in, that's where your cost savings are. It's really not the textbooks. You're going to get the textbooks, they're going to be about the same. It's everything else when you try to roll a seven-year package, which is what we did, for the number of students we have, we got a good deal and it's all inclusive from shipping through replacement upgrades and of course, the professional development for the teachers. So I don't know how much more I could say.
Okay, I appreciate that, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Bellamy, in response to your question about whether you should be allowed to vote on this, you are not in direct supervision of your daughter. And as board president, I'm going to allow you to vote. I don't see any conflict. If other board members think there's a conflict, now's the time to say something, but I don't see a conflict. Ms. Vekalas?
So I'm appreciative of all the comments and the information that is out there and I'll, you know, being honest with my fellow board members, I am on the fence on this. I understand that a process was done and I, you know, Member Bellamy used it. Like you said, if we don't like it, it's something we can change later. But we did go through, you know, a designed process and I respect that. And the contracts are negotiated, which is awesome. I love, you know, what our administration does. One of my questions would be is, you know, do we lose this good deal that Jim Anderson was just talking about if we do delay it? Is one of my first questions, but I think one of my concerns and probably part of what Mr. Donley's concern is as well and I think this is what I'm struggling with is, you know, easily for the last two weeks, if not, you know, three, I don't believe that our public is as engaged, you know, with us as a school board and a governing body as they ordinarily would be. Right now, they are doing the very best to remain engaged in their own lives and their own homes and their own health and stuff like that. And, you know, when it comes to, you know, having a, you know, this open and transparent process, we are all, you know, every government agency is doing the very best that they can to make sure that they're getting information out and letting people know what's going on and votes that are being taken. And this is a big deal, you know, this is a math curriculum. This isn't like our, you know, five or six other, you know, action items, you know, that are, you know, fairly routine in our process and stuff like that, you know, that does work on kind of the backside of the maintenance and stuff. This is a big thing that impacts, you know, families and kids and, you know, parents right now are, you know, probably very intimately learning, you know, how much they do or don't like, you know, some of our current math stuff. And it would be, you know, probably a more engaged public, you know, looking at it, you know, going forward, knowing that we're about to adopt something which probably has a lifespan of, you know, five to 10 years would be my guess. And so that is a component that does have me concerned that we don't have as much reach and communication. We have a lot of communication, I'm not trying to say that. That we don't have the feedback from the community that we might, if we weren't in the middle of a big crisis. And so it begs the question, is right now absolutely the only time or right time to make this kind of a big decision? And that's what I'm trying to listen for, you know, in some of the board member comments and stuff like that. Because, you know, I am really sitting on the fence with this one right now.
Madam President, I could, I'm getting the information that I maybe could respond to, Member Vekalas. I believe that this was originally scheduled in January for the board action. It was put off a couple of weeks, put off a couple of weeks. So I think this is probably the, quite a longer process than usual, even given the two weeks of being off. I can get the exact proposals when they came through from the timeline that was originally selected and presented to the board in a work session. Perhaps Dr. Knutson can answer that. Back in the fall when it was presented, I believe that the original timeline that was published was closer to January. So, and we just held on to it. But I'll let, I could be off by a month or two because it's just crazy. So I'll turn that over if that's okay, President Marsete.
Sure, I just wanted to make a comment too, though, that we have been talking about this. It's come up in several board meetings. Like you said, I think it's January longer. It has been put off. I think there's been plenty of time that we've been talking about this. I think we talked about it in a work session at one time. So I think there's been plenty of opportunity for the public to either testify or comment on this. But yes, I would agree and I would like to hear from Dr. Knutson.
Thank you through the President to the board. We were on track with the timeline. I think it was where it was put in Board Connect and briefed on. The whole review process was in December. A team met and narrowed it down and then briefed the board through that. In January, we were moving along and then there was some questions about whether the process wanted to be changed. But that wasn't brought up as a direction from the board for us to move in a different direction. So we kept going on. By the end of January is when the recommendation by the committee was made and then made to the superintendent. So really by the beginning of February is when we were ready to bring this forward. But then getting, you know, getting on the board agenda and just making sure every, all the ducks were in a row was, we want to make sure everything was in place to answer everyone's questions. So it delayed it a little bit in that respect.
Thank you, Dr. Knutson. Are there any other board comments? Mr. Donley, did you want to make an amendment to this or are we moving forward with the vote?
Thank you, Madam President. I would move to reschedule memorandum 96 to be on the non-action agenda for the May 19 meeting. And that would allow a final vote on the June 2 meeting.
Do I have a second?
Well, second for at least discussion purposes.
Okay, and who was at the second minute?
Oh, Member Vekalas.
Okay, thank you. So now, Mr. Donley's amendment is up for discussion. Mr. Donley, I think you've spoken to it already and I'd like you to speak again. But Deana Mitchell has her hand up, so I'm going to call on Deana.
Yeah, I guess I just, I know that there was a public comment period for this curriculum and it was before the pandemic began. So I feel like there was opportunity for public input and that the pandemic hopefully didn't eclipse that because I think that was back in the late fall, wasn't it?
Yes, I believe so. Am I right, Dr. Knutson?
Through the President to Member Mitchell, the public viewing and of the materials was in January. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah. Yes, so I guess it is possible. There was a lot going on at that point in time. But I think, I mean, my personal opinion is that if people are very interested in following curriculum decisions for the district, which probably is not the majority of people, they, it would be on their radar screen, I would hope. So I guess that's my way of saying I think that there was an opportunity for people to provide input and I think the process probably worked well and I feel comfortable voting for this curriculum.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions? Mr. Donley, did you want to speak to your amendment?
Thank you, Madam President. I certainly agree with Dr. Stock and others that we need a new math curriculum. But I also don't think we need to rush into the same mistakes that were made 12 years ago and also six years ago by adopting a curriculum that doesn't connect with parents and doesn't connect with students and that took us from being in the 60th percentile with the Anchorage School District's mathematics scores down into the 30s and then into the, up to the 40s where we are now. These last two curriculums have been horrible failures and Common Core all over the nation is an experiment that's failing. And that's why four states have abandoned it already. I think that's one reason why Matsu School Board didn't go along with the recommendation and decide to delay and have more consideration of it in their district. And I think we need to fully consider what's in the best interest of our students. And I had hoped that just basic fairness and, you know, I don't want anybody to get the wrong idea that I haven't been advocating this for over a year now because I've been raising this alarm for a year. But I think basic fundamental fairness would have required that we also have a pilot program for Saxon Math. Saxon Math is used in four of our schools and they're all top 20 performing math schools. Actually, the top performing school in our district uses Saxon Math, which 12 years ago was the top vote getter when we used to have an open public process on this, on curriculum selection, unlike the backroom process we have now. So Saxon Math is proven to be successful in four of our schools. And yet, despite my request that we give it a fair shot and give it at least a pilot experiment along with any Common Core. along with any Common Core, um, and Saxon Math is Common Core compliant. But it's one of the basis for Ready Math is it's, it's super Common Core. Um, and that's right in the, uh, the reports, basically, that it was chosen because it's like the most common core of all the options. So I, I believe that Saxon Math seriously needs a fair evaluation. I don't believe it received it in this process. Not one of the, anybody who teaches Saxon Math was part of the panel that helped rec, make this recommendation. And I think that's a big uh, fault, a big lacking of the process. So I really do believe it should be delayed. Um, and I would hope that basic fairness would have compelled the district to also do an equal uh, assessment of Saxon Math since it's already proven so successful in our, in our district. And, and I've been advocating that for a long time. I think the January glitch that was discussed was that I was under the impression and I, it was inaccurate. But in talking with, with certain members of the administration that it looked like we were going to be able to have an additional pilot program for Saxon Math. But um, there was opposition and uh, there was a communication gap there. And I didn't learn of that that was not going to be happening for, for, for some time. And so there was a communication difficulty there. And I, I really think that this is a very serious decision uh, for our community and for our students. And I think that we need to fully explore an existing other viable alternative uh, and before we make this decision. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Bellamy, and then I have a comment.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, my, my only comment is, is that the teachers, um, the community people who wanted to be involved had the opportunity. And I think, you know, I, I just think that we had the, our experts are our teachers. And I don't know that they would have come, made a recommendation. They would not, they made the best recommendation that they could. And I trust that they did um, consider all the options. Um, it, it, and I, and I think um, while it may not have been the choi, my choice, uh, it is the choice of the experts who are out there teaching all of our kids from all different uh, backgrounds, all different ability levels, all different family backgrounds. And I trust that they gave this their due consideration and made the best recommendation possible for all kids. Um, so I will not be voting to it. Uh, I, I will be not voting for the motion. Thank you.
So I, I guess, uh, well, there's a lot of things I, I could say, but I did take, um, I don't want the public to think that this was a backroom process because it was not. Uh, this is a process. It's in policy. We uh, the district followed the policy. They did not do anything wrong. Um, this is a policy the board set forth for them to follow. It was not a backroom um, exercise, if, if you want to call that as you did, Mr. Donnelly. So I, I, I do want the public to know that this was a process that was followed. It's policy that the board set. And if this is uh, something the board wants to look at to change the policy, that's certainly something we can do in the future. But um, I too will be uh, voting against this amendment and uh, voting for us to move forward with the curriculum based on the recommendation and the fact that the uh, district did follow the policy, again, that the uh, board has set. So at this time, I don't see other hands in the queue. Uh, we are going to vote on Mr. Donnelly's uh, amendment, which is, I move to reschedule memo ninety-six for non-action agenda for May nineteenth meeting, allowing final vote at June second meeting. Katie, if you'd call the roll, please.
Madam President, Ms. Vekalas?
Uh, yes.
Uh, member Donnelly?
Yes.
Member Hildy?
No.
Member Mitchell?
No.
Member Bellamy? Member Bellamy?
No.
Thank you. Member Holloman?
No.
And member Marsette?
No.
So that amendment uh, fails with five nays and two yays. And we will now move on to the main motion. And the main motion is to approve the adoption of the Ready Mathematics published by Curriculum Associates as a mathematics instruction material for grades K through eight. And it is also the administration's recommendation that the school board approve a transfer of funds in the amount of fifteen, one million five hundred for implementation through uh, two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year. So are there any other? Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, first of all, I'd like to probably correct my terminology from the use of the term backroom. I'd like to change that to a more accurate terminology, which would be a much less democratic and community participation process than we used to do 12 years ago. And uh, would couple with that, that other school districts who actually adopt uh, go through this curriculum process, many of them have all their teachers who actually teach this particular subject have a void, vote. They actually vote and, and, and tally that vote and stick that into consideration. And we no longer do that in the Anchorage School District. But given all that, I would move that we amend the main motion to instruct that.
Uh, yes, Ms. Bellamy.
Can you clarify where we are? I thought we were voting on, we were at the main motion.
We're at the main motion for discussion. So we're at the main.
Oh, are we into discussion now?
Yes. Uh-huh. So amendments can be um, presented. Mr. Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd move to amend the main motion to instruct that a pilot program uh, with Saxon Math also be conducted um, uh, for the board's information to determine the final uh, math curriculum adopted.
Is there a second? Okay, Mr. Donnelly, I'm not hearing a second to your motion. Um, so we will continue on with discussion. Do I have any other board discussion or comments? Okay, not hearing none. Uh, Ms. Uh, Katie, can you call the roll, please?
This is President Marsette. Um, President Marsette?
Yes. Oh, yes.
Sorry. Member Vekalas?
No.
Member Donnelly?
No.
Member Hildy?
Yes.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Thank you. Member Holloman?
Yes.
Okay, and that memorandum zero nine six passes with five yays and two nays. Moving on, Ms. Hildy.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number one hundred and authorize the superintendent to execute agreement to the professional service agreement with McCool Carlson Green, MCG Architects, in the amount of one million five hundred thirty thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars to continue design development from revised thirty-five percent through project closeout and increase authority to execute future contract amendments from two million to six point, three point six five million. It is further recommended that the school board authorize the redirection of one point nine million of unsold bond authority from the two, twenty thirteen bond proposition for the Greening Middle School Earthquake Recovery Professional Services Agreement.
Second.
Okay, I want to open this up for board discussion. And I believe this not only uh, is asking uh, to give the superintendent authority to execute uh, it's for all future contracts. Um, am I understanding this or is it just for this one?
Uh, Madam President, uh, this is specific to uh, Greening Middle School.
Okay. And then my next question is, and I believe it's in this also where we are taking, um, it says we spent fifteen percent of the ten point seven uh, two million on planning and design on Central and that there's uh, one point nine million to be allocated. What is, what is the amount that we've spent on that already and what, did we, did we accomplish anything? Um, um, I just kind of want to update on, on where the minute mine went and, and uh, where we're at with uh, Central.
Uh, Madam President, uh, if, if I could have the host transfer Tom Fenicep from the attendee to the panelist. So, so by way of background, as, as I'm sure you well know, Central Middle School has been uh, on and off the, the six-year capital plan for, for several years. And, and there was a, a proposal to, to do a renovation of Central. Um, there was a, a proposition passed twenty thirteen for the, to fund the design to do that. So now that Central is not on the six-year plan, or at least not in the, 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 the near term for, for any improvement, that this funding is available and, and by way of background, uh, and it's, it's kind of crazy. It almost feels like ancient history when the board initially approved the district to move forward on the repairs and the seismic improvements to Greening. The amount was about twenty-four point six million and, and when the board approved that moving forward, it was funded to provide a design for that level of repair and improvement. The board subsequently approved that the project go forward on the bond for thirty-nine point three million. And this funding is intended to capture that remaining additional cost to do the more involved uh, Greening Middle School repairs and other improvements.
Right. No, I understand that. I'm just wondering when we talk about, um, and I, and I kind of wrote this right, right out of there, is that um, we have already spent money on Central and we're just taking what's been not spent to transfer it?
That, that's correct. I'm going to ask Mr. Tom Fenicep, who I see now is on the panelist. Tom, if you would come up and, and address this specific question of the board president.
Yes, so through the president, um, it was originally intended for planning and design for Central Middle School. Uh, however, a very small portion of that was actually used because we didn't have a um, a full plan for Central Middle School yet. So that, that small amount of planning that was done for it has sat on the shelf for over seven years now. Because we also added PIDEA into Central, that changed the plan for Central. So all that planning we originally had is, is pretty much stale now. And it, we're better using the money towards Greening.
And I don't disagree. I just would kind of like to know, how, what was the dollar amount that we spent? On, on Central before moving?
I, I don't have those numbers offhand.
Okay.
But it was a small amount. It, it wasn't a lot.
Maybe if we could get that on, in uh, Board Connect, I, I, I'd like to know that dollar amount if possible.
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other uh, board discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none. Katie, if we call roll, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, member Hildy?
Yes.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
Member Marsette?
Yes.
Member Vekalas?
Yes.
Member Donnelly?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Okay, and that memorandum one hundred uh, passes with seven yays.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number one zero two and authorize the superintendent to award a contract for the Orion Elementary School Best Value Roof Replacement to High Point Construction Incorporated for a total award amount of three million eight hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay. We have a second. Is there any board discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Uh, Katie, if you would call roll, please.
Uh, member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Marsette?
Yes.
Member Vekalas?
Yes.
Member Donnelly?
Yes.
Member Hildy?
Yes.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and that memorandum one zero two passes with seven yays.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number one zero three and authorize the superintendent to award a contract for the Bay Shore Elementary School Boiler Replacement Project to Ameresco Incorporated for a total award amount of eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred eighty-one dollars.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Is there any board discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none. Katie, call roll, please.
Member Donnelly? And we'll come back to member Donnelly. Um, member Hildy?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
Member Marsette?
Yes.
Member Vekalas?
Yes.
And member Donnelly?
Member Donnelly gave a thumbs up.
He did. Okay, thank. Thank you. I am unable to see him. Thank you.
Okay, and memorandum one zero three passes with seven yays.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number one zero five and authorize the superintendent to utilize the design build project delivery method for heating system and plumbing system replacement upgrades in the West High School Utilador.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Is there any board discussion uh, or comments? Seeing none. Katie, would you call roll, please? And if we're going too quickly, Katie, you need to catch up. Let me know.
No, I just um, uh, attempted to call Mr. Donnelly again through the Zoom meeting. So we'll see if he's able to connect. Um, member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Marsette?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
Member Vekalas?
Yes.
Member Donnelly?
Yes.
Hey, there he is.
Member Hildy?
Yes.
Okay, and memorandum zero one five passes unanimously with seven yays.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number one one six, the transfer of funds for various instructional and support items in the amount of two million dollars to support changing instructional and service models due to building closures related to the COVID nineteen virus.
Second.
I have a second. Is there any board discussion or questions? Okay, hearing or seeing none. Um, Katie, please call roll.
Member Hildy?
Yes.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Marsette?
Yes.
Member Vekalas?
Yes.
Member Donnelly?
Yes.
All right. And memorandum one one six passes with seven yays. And then Katie, I believe we have. And then Katie, I believe we have another one, that amendment to the agenda.
Yes, Madam President. There is, yep.
Due to the state of emergency declared by the governor of Alaska, I move to suspend BB ninety-one twenty officers until the second meeting in May.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Is there a board discussion or comments? And so I will speak, I don't see anybody's hands raised, but I will speak to this. Having talked with our AJ this afternoon and some of our training, he said that many boards are doing this and just because it's a tough time to transition over with the state of emergency by the governor, many things have been suspended. My hope is that by May twenty-first, which would be our second meeting in May, that we would be able to do this. And so that is what I'm proposing. Is there any other board discussion or comments? Okay, seeing none. Katie, would you call roll, please?
Member Vekalas?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Hildy?
Yes.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Marset?
Yes.
Okay, and that suspension BB nine one two oh officers passes with seven yeas. Now moving on to non-action items, are there any non-action items that board members would like to pull?
I'd like to pull number five, funding for health teachers.
Okay, are there any others? Okay, seeing no others, we're pulling number five. And Ms. Vekalas, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, thank you. The intention behind this is to add, and I apologize for the late add on it, but to add three point three million dollars to this upcoming budget to bring our health teachers back into the mix for this upcoming year. I probably won't, wouldn't put it as part of the main memo, but would put it, you know, have it be under the consideration and stipulation as the Ignite program that it would be for, you know, one more year. Because we know when budget talks come around in another year, we're still looking at a ten to twelve million dollar shortfall. But right now, we were looking at redesigning our health delivery. And the time right now where we're so focused and the administration and teaching staff is so focused on, you know, the online delivery, there, you know, hasn't been any time to redesign a program. And quite honestly, coming off of a health pandemic, you know, it's probably a good time to have our teachers, you know, health teachers be able to talk to our kids and just give a reprieve for one year. And I believe, you know, through additional funding that's likely to come, that we will be able to do this for one more year. So that is kind of where the impetus is coming for bringing our health teachers online for one more year. And I just wanted to talk to it as a non-action item and kind of get the sense of the board whether to put together a full memo for voting on it in two weeks.
Okay, Mr. Holloman, I know that you wanted to speak on this.
Um, yes, I, I support us taking this action provided we can find the funds. And I realize at the moment, we don't know where those are at. But I'm hoping that enough board members will weigh in that the administration has a good indication of what the sense of the board is. I think one thing that hasn't really percolated out to the public because so much else has been going on is that this does drive a change in the schedule. And that schedule is going to be difficult for a certain portion of our parents. If we'd finished up this year normally and the world was going in a normal fashion, we might be able to throw that curve ball at them and, and whatnot. But we are obviously going to have kind of a wrecked economy in Alaska for, for all summer and still be recovering as we go into fall. We're just going to have a difficult time. So I think, one, trying to maintain the same school schedule would be beneficial for a lot of people. But also, I, I think the role the health teachers play is critical and important. And that we need to, to recognize that. And if at all possible, bring this, bring their positions back. My hope was that the governor would sign the budget with the extra money for education in it. And that would have provided ample funds. If, if we can trust that there is going to be a significant chunk of funds coming from the federal government through the state government to us, I think we'll be able to find, find room for it. If, if we can be fiscally prudent and pass this, I would definitely be a yes vote.
Okay, Ms. Bellamy?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I, I would be a yes vote too if we could figure out the money. Because I know we, when you were at the assembly, Madam President, you, they had a resolution around. And I think we, we probably indicated to them that if there was money, that there would be, that we would come back and revisit the health teachers. So I, I, I don't know. I mean, the timeline from Jim, maybe on the twenty-four first, we'll have a better idea of the money. But yeah, I mean, I just don't know at this moment, tonight, where that money is going to come from. So, but I do support bringing the health teachers back. I just don't know that, where, where the money is coming from. So.
Dr. Bishop, would you want to speak to this? I'm not sure about, you know, what our timeline is here as far as, because I don't think we're, those individuals are still working. So I don't know. That's a matter of pinks lips. I'm, I'm just not sure.
Right. Really, we don't, we're moving forward with the federal government. Jim's confident that the three point three million is there. He's even upwards of a greater amount. As he stated earlier, that it looks to be about even. The federal money that comes through the Title I dispersment mechanism would be equal to around the state funding and local match that would have been through the thirty million statewide. So Jim's, Jim's confident that it will be there. We just don't know the vehicle and, and all that work. So the details of it, but the three point three is such a smaller amount than the total. And, and perhaps, Jim, if, if there's anything else you, you could add, that would be great.
I can, yes. I, I'm pretty confident because the state of Alaska is scheduled to get thirty-eight million dollars towards K-12. The CARES Act allows them to take ten percent off the top, which leaves thirty-four million dollars. It's supposed to be distributed in accordance with the state's Title I distribution plan. This year, we received thirty-one percent of the state's Title I money. So for, for that reason, the math just plays out that it should be over ten million dollars. And it's not tied to AADM. It's tied to the Title I distribution. So, yeah, I, I feel pretty confident. I don't know the mechanism or potentially any strings that come out of it, and we'll work that over the next couple of weeks. But the three point three is covered or will be covered.
Okay. Mr. Anderson, I have a question if you don't mind. Could that percentage of what we get in those funds, could the governor of the state determine the percentage is different?
Well, we don't, we don't know that the governor can't request more waivers. I mean, I'd be hard pressed to look at a five hundred page document.
I know.
Guarantee that there's not something there. But the way it's clearly spelled out is it is supposed to be and is designed to be distributed in accordance with Title I distribution. So if you look at Juno, they've only got two Title I schools. There's certainly with that concept and with that distribution methodology, winners and losers.
Okay, so, and I, probably I'm asking questions you can't answer. But you know, my thought is if this continues on the COVID nineteen months, we're going to be looking at additional supports needed. It could, I don't know how this goes for teachers that put in their notice that they'll be leaving at the end of the year. I know we had like seven, I was looking at the personnel report. We had seven sped teachers that were terminating, retiring, whatever. And so how does that affect hiring or having more people come on board? And, you know, as we look at this, and maybe we need more one-on-one for students, are we looking at having more TAs or substitutes or whatever to supplement those requirements? And maybe, Mr. Anderson, you aren't the person to answer. I'm not sure.
Yeah, Madam President, yeah, we don't really have all those details. And, and whenever we can, we, we do want to hire teachers for that most effective. And you're right, just the shortage of, of teachers. But all that is, we, like, like Jim Anderson mentioned, we're, we're still getting the detail on that. So even the programming moving forward is the detail to discuss. It would be difficult at this time to predict that.
Yeah, I, I know. I'm getting the cart before the horse. Sorry. Ms. Bellamy?
Yeah, just a question. So if we, the earliest we'll vote on this is when? Is that the twenty-first?
Well, it would, now that it's been on, yeah, it would be on the twenty, no. This would actually go to. Well, because it's in a non-action now, it will move forward to action items, which would mean that we would vote on this at the next school board meeting, which would be the same time. Get the update from Mr. Anderson. Yes.
Okay, so then where does that fall, I guess, in terms of staffing? I mean, you know, I mean, when, when, when do, I know in April is when you guys staff, right, Dr. Bishop?
Yes.
We need to.
Okay. We're in the process of that now, but we can push that back as needed, especially in understanding this. In giving direction to our employees.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Mitchell?
Yeah, I just, I know that Member Holloman touched on this, but I just wanted to express my thoughts on the PLC time. I think that time is really important. I've been to a couple of my schools and sat in and watched some of the PLCs, and they really are valuable time for colleagues to share information and advice. But I do think that it was, as we heard from assembly members who talked about community, their, their constituents who had no idea this was going on. I would hope that if we are bringing back the health teachers, hopefully that will happen, that we could maybe put that off for a year since we won't have that urgency. And then we can explain to the community more fully, get more buy-in, you know, talk to the teachers more. I just wanted to, to express my thoughts on that, on that topic.
Certainly, thank you. Are there any other board comments or on this non-action item? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so we're going to move on. Are there any board requests for information? Good.
I have one.
Oh, okay.
I was going to say, I don't think it'll be as kind. No, this, this is one that can either come out in a board connect, maybe through the superintendent's office. I know everybody's living in a COVID nineteen world right now, but there's still so very much going on. And so I would love to just get a FEMA update and an earthquake update and maybe just an update post-election and bond and stuff like that. And, and just some of those kind of components. It used to be our big topic of conversation, just to kind of follow up and keep it, you know, on top of mind somehow.
Madam President, that, that, we, we can get that information. We do still have staff working on those things. And presently, the bond is ahead.
Yes, I saw that. Yay. Okay, Mr. Holloman?
I do have this in as a request through the superintendent. A couple of people in elementary have talked to me about using YouTube. YouTube's been an interesting pivot of discussion for use with students ever since we started having a filter or the internet, I think. But I know that you folks have not had the chance to research this, but there are recent changes to YouTube that allow it to be used much more safely with children thirteen and under. And at the next board meeting, I'm hoping we can have a report about whether or not we can loosen our restrictions on the use of it for folks in elementary.
Madam President, I'm not sure if you would like, Mike Fleckenstein might have had comments on that. Would you like, I did see that in his report, but we just didn't get to it. So we could send that for board connect and then also next time if you'd like.
There's not a big rush on it.
Okay. All right, we will send that for board connect or we can follow up on it at the next school board meeting also. At this time, we have no public testimony. Do we have any school board or administration comments or communications? Ms. Hart, Mr. Holloman?
Well, I do have comments if we're at that part of the meeting.
Yes.
Like I think everybody else, I've been looking at the results coming in. And, and I think what we see in the vote tonight is a lot of optimism and a long-term view by the citizens of Anchorage. The last time they passed our bond package by a large margin, that was pretty uplifting to me. The fact that I think all the bonds are up, some of them are pretty close, so that might change. But the school bond in particular looks to me to be up by a margin that probably won't change with the remaining votes. And it is, it's something that's very cheering, but at the same time, it comes with a real sense of gravity. People are trusting us with a big chunk of their future. And I hope everybody goes to work every, I know you folks do. But that's, it's good news and it is a lot of work in front of us to do. So I want to thank citizens of Anchorage for their trust tonight and in this election.
Mr. Stock?
My team's probably going to chuckle at this because sometimes I get the reputation of being the college professor who wants to talk about the data all the time. But there was some data put out tonight that just mentioned that, you know, that Saxon Math, the number one ranked school in the district in math was, on peaks was a Saxon school, which is, which is true. And I was a principal of a Saxon school. In fact, my third grade teachers in nineteen eighty-eight actually wrote the third grade Saxon math portions for the company. So I'm well aware of it. It's a good program. But I guess just for clarity, I wanted to point out that the second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth and thirteenth schools were all GoMath schools. So I, I realize Saxon's a really good program, but I do think our teachers make a big difference in terms of what they do with the materials. And so both programs are robust programs and we offer them. And yes, we've had problems with the GoMath as far as some other reasons, which we aim to fix. And so I am confident that our team of teachers has chosen the program that we hope can do that with the proper training. So I just had to say that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stock. Deanna Mitchell?
I'm sorry, I think you forgot to un, unraise my hand before I don't have anything to add. Just thank you to everybody.
Oh, okay. Okay. Ms. Bellamy, did you have your hand up or?
I did. We're just at general comments now, right?
Yes.
Okay, first of all, I also want to thank the community for their trust and faith. These were tough decisions. And I think we came at it and gave it our best. And they, they, they are hanging in there with us to try to do the best thing for all kids. So I appreciate that. But I also want to, and the staff has been, the administration coordinating all of this and collaborating. I mean, it's beyond. I mean, it it's beyond, it's just beyond real. But what is absolutely unreal for me is is what we've asked teachers to do. Um, and I, I I wish I could just go and thank each one of them or do something special for for each one of them, because this is beyond the call of duty. And I just want them to know that we recognize that and that we do appreciate that. And even though we're not out there on the corner with our banners and jumping up and down, uh, we are, in my heart, I am. So I thank you, teachers, I thank you, uh, transportation, I thank you, uh, nurses. I mean, for you to be out there in the public, um, doing the best you can do with the the center and um riding buses and just carrying on, I just love it. And I do want you to know how much I appreciate it. I think we all appreciate it. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And if I missed a group, I love all y'all. Thank you.
Yep. Uh, Mrs. uh, Dr. Bishop?
Uh, thank you. I did lots of things to go around, but uh also, uh, in regard to the bond, I just appreciate the communications that, uh, in conjunction with the the school board members that went out to community councils, uh, really Alan and his team in communications, uh, Aquarian, Inlet View, uh, the work in Eagle River, uh, in Chugiac with uh deciding with Eagle River High School and Chugiac High and Greening, uh, Homestead Eagle River Elementary, really, um, so many people contributed to the goodness of that. And I just want to to share that, that it it truly was a a community effort, and and everybody just pitching in a little is going to make everything better in the long run, and that's our goal. And so uh, the best thing about it is no bond next year. So we are done, uh, and we can just focus on getting the work done and moving forward uh education in uh Anchorage, the municipality of Anchorage. So, so thank you, and again, the work of our staff, especially, uh, you know, our our teachers every day, meeting minutes of kids, it's just been phenomenal. Uh, it just brings joy to see some of those uh video clips that they do send, uh, and just wide-eyed kids uh being so happy to see the person that they love in their classrooms. Thank you.
So I would just add, um, you know, of of course, I mean, I, what we're doing, and I know uh Ms. Bellamy called it a hurtling, and I can't even say it, but effort. Um, just this, yes, thank you. Um, it it's just amazing that we've been able to do this, but I don't want to forget our parents and students, um, just because this has been really tough on our parents also. And many of our teachers are parents, so they're doing double duty, I understand that. Um, but I, you know, I I get emails, I I get phone calls, and I just want to let parents know that, you know, we we are doing what we can and that we appreciate so much your understanding, uh, your support, and that of the students also, and just know that we will all get through this, that this will end and it will not continue. And I look forward to the day that I can uh walk into a school and visit a classroom again and talk with our students and our teachers, and um I'm very positive. And that's what gets me through this, is just thinking ahead to to, when we get back to whatever normal is. But uh, being able to walk into our schools again and see our students. So are there any other uh comments before I ask for a motion to adjourn? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move adjourn.
Second.
Second? All right, good night, everyone.
Good night, guys. Thank you. Good work.